Call this meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Corlick, I gotta get my tongue working. Counselor Corlick. And we don't need a second or a motion to adopt the committee of the whole. We don't need one?
No.
Good enthusiasm. All right, all those in favor? And the minutes of the May 6th committee of the whole, can I have a motion to adopt those? Counselor Moss, all those in favor? First delegation this morning is the quarterly report from Gallery 2. And congratulations on the opening of your new display on the river and the flooding and stuff. I understand it was a great success.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, counsel. My name is Tim Van Ooyck, I'm director curator at Gallery 2. And with me is Gary Bowden, who is the treasurer of the board of the Grand Forks Art Gallery Society. It's been a busy spring. We started with the Boundary Showcase in April, which seems like a long time ago now. But we had a post-diluvian, or after-the-flood juritorial theme that worked out really well. We had lots of good responses, perhaps both from the general submissions to the showcase, as well as through the invited pieces. This year, we really focused the showcase on school groups and making sure that we were outreaching to the local elementary and high schools. And that worked out fantastically. We had 275 kids there over the two-week period, including at one point, I think, the entire West Boundary was in the gallery, which was great to see the trips coming in from further away. And then concurrently with that, we ran a partner fundraiser with Habitat for Humanity called Take A Seat, where people were invited to paint chairs, and we had a silent auction for those. And we raised just over $1,700 for each organization through that as well. Fantastic success. Following that, we went immediately into our Rembrandt's Addict fundraiser, which raised over $4,000 for gallery operations. So thanks to everyone who participated in that, came to it, spent money on it, or just came to the opening. It was an excellent event. And then our picture here, you may have noticed the subtle 20-foot sign that went up on the gallery. This is the second-to-last sign in our signage and wayfinding project, and we think it looks quite fabulous. Yet to come on that project is the feature lighting. You might notice at night, the updated pot lighting in these offices around the back entry. We still have uplighting that's going on the building. Those are on order, and we anticipate those installed by, in time for taps and tapas in August, on August 16th. As well, this spring, we successfully applied to the Phoenix Foundation. We've received an additional $10,000 for capital improvements. This has gone towards track lighting in the downstairs, lowing, and dimmers in our smaller exhibition galleries, which is going to drastically improve our ability to control lighting in the Fog and the West Galleries, as well as some IT and AV equipment. Similar to last year, we are going to try to leverage these funds for building further capital improvements through provincial and other funding streams that require matching funding. So it's really great to have the support of the Phoenix Foundation to be able to get essentially unmatched funding that we can leverage for future upgrades to the facility. Additionally, it's excellent that Rowley is here today. Thank you for the $5,000 grants and aid for our website redesign. Focus on this is mobile optimization and our brand consistency. We're expecting this to go live at the end of, by the end of the summer. So getting back to the mayor's comments, we just opened our summer exhibitions on Friday evening. We had 76 people out for exhibition opening, which is record-setting for us. Upstairs in the Reed and the West Gallery, we have River Relations, a holder's view of the Columbia River. This is a sprawling group exhibition that examines the legacy and the impact of the big dams on the Columbia River, particularly around the treaty, the Columbia River Treaty Dams, but also at the entire length of the river. So it's this, it's everything from 114-foot-long poems suspended in the middle of the gallery that follows the length of the Columbia River, to some really thoughtful paintings done using the silt from various reservoirs, to these amazing prints of dams on the river. Hopefully, y'all will get a chance to see it. We're running our summer exhibitions longer this summer, so they'll be on until the end of August. And then in the Fog Gallery, Lita Hyberg, who most of you will know, has done this amazing group of charcoal and ink drawings that's a response specifically to the flood. She worked with aerial and drone footage, and it's this really mesmerizing, almost claustrophobic feeling of being there. As you can see, there's discernible landmarks, but it really zooms out and is quite a thought book of experience. In case that wasn't enough, arts and culture for you. We also collaborated with the Boundary Flood Recovery Team to do a post-diluvian data visualization. This is a web-based piece that's on display in the mezzanine, and it's integrating the, a lot of the data that was collected and has been collected by the flood recovery team, and integrated it into their presentation format that sort of puts the whole piece more into context. We've also integrated in works from the Boundary Showcase that relate to specific areas of the flood. So again, it's just trying to, you know, a year on, we're trying to put things in context and think about it in the larger picture. And then downstairs, there's a heritage exhibition called Rollin' Columbia, which is a partner to the River Relations that is more historical context about the Columbia River Treaty. And then finally, in our rental gallery, I'm pleased to say, we partnered with the Gallery Trail Society to exhibit their photo contest winners. So there were four categories and a grand prize winner. Happy to say Tina Bryan, our communications lead, was the winner. But not because she was, it was snowing. It's a fantastic show. But it's a great show, and that will be up until September. So getting to the more operational details, this is our revenues expenses to our year end, which is March 31st, 2019. Really, the number I want to draw your attention to is the total net revenue at the bottom of $877. So we spent slightly less than we made. I'm really pleased to present this number. It was my first full year as presenting a budget as director curator. And as everyone will know, it's been an interesting year navigating with the flood. There were a lot of moving parts, so everybody pulled together, and we came out just ahead, which is where we want to be. Moving forward, this is our approved budget for 2019-2020. There aren't any real changes here. It's a hold the line in terms of revenue expenses. We're anticipating a total revenue of $358,000 and matching that with our expenses. And thank you very much for your time, and if there's any questions, I'll have you answer.
What about your bodyguard? Is he gonna speak, Gary?
No, I'm not gonna say anything. I think Kim has covered it very well, and leave questions to him.
Yeah, excellent creativity, amazing activity level. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, can you back up one slide?
Yes.
So I see Venusville around you down there at 147.
Yes.
Can you flip back one more slide? And I see City of Grand Forks, 144. Can you tell me the difference?
Yes, as part of our fee-for-service agreement, we're in the midst of a three-year funding agreement that sees a 2% increase year over year. So this is year two of that agreement. Hopefully, next year will be another 2%. It's barely, it's just enough to keep ahead of inflation, essentially.
Further? Anyone from the gallery have questions? About the gallery? Hearing none, thank you very much, Tim. I think, you know, really shining piece of our community and something that really signals that we're healthy and moving forward. So thank you for your efforts and your group's effort.
Thank you.
So the next item is Boundary Area Food and Agricultural Plan, and I think we have a couple of ladies here for this. Donna and, I don't know this lady.
I'll introduce myself. Hi, I'm Tara, I'm Tara Starck. I'm a public health dietitian with Interior Health's Healthy Communities Team. Oh, thanks for looking. I'm Tara Starck, I'm a public health dietitian with Interior Health's Healthy Communities Team. And with me is Donna Dean, she's the manager of planning and development with the Regional District of County Boundary. And we have come to tell you about the Boundary Area Food and Agriculture Plan. So yeah, Donna and I are both gonna present. I wanted to start by introducing my team a bit, so we work with municipalities and regional districts and the local government on issues related to health. And I do the food and agriculture piece. I have colleagues who will work with things like housing or poverty, walkability, built environment, so that's what my team does. So this plan goes in the next, oh, did we pencil slides? There it is. So we don't have copies of the plan today, but you can access it on the regional district website. And this is an image of the front page. So this plan replaces the previous aid plan, which was created in 2011. It expands the scope of the aid plan to include food systems and food security, and it's intended to be a 10- to 12-year plan. And really, its purpose is to strengthen and increase the resiliency of the food and agriculture in the boundary. And I'm just gonna add to that. So in 2011, we had our first agricultural area plan for the Boundary Area. And so it includes all three municipalities and the three electoral areas. And we felt, well, getting close to being due for a review, because that was 2011. And also, we felt that there was a lack of public participation, and the consultant we had knew before, they didn't necessarily reach out as much as we had wished at that time. So this one, we have, and Tara will go more into that, but more comprehensive public consultation. Yeah, thanks. So next slide, please. That was with me. I got this. Okay, so really briefly, we're gonna talk about how the plan was developed. We're gonna touch on the vision statement and the goals, and then Donna's gonna speak more to the actions and then to implementation. So as Donna mentioned, this is just a map showing the area that the plan covers. So it includes the Regional District of County Boundary, Electoral Areas C, St. Lake, D, rural Grand Forks, and E.D. Grand Forks Boundary, and the municipalities of Midway, Greenwood, and Grand Forks. So project oversight was done by a steering committee, which consisted of Regional District of County Boundary staff and elected officials, myself from Interior Health, and a partner from Community Futures. And then to provide ongoing engagement and stakeholder involvement in creating and implementing the plan, the Boundary and Area Food and Advisory Council was also established. So this council includes members from agriculture, from food security sectors, other local government staff and municipal partners. And they basically, the council provided sort of guidance at key points along the development of the plan. So this is just a summary of the engagement we did. And like Donna said, this was kind of a key piece for us, was to make sure that our communities were really well-engaged. So four open houses were held, there was a survey of all the area farmers, there was a survey for community members, and then there was a variety of farm tours and kind of kitchen table discussions, one-on-one phone calls, and outreach to specific stakeholders. And then in addition to the engagement piece, there were two background documents that were produced. There was a Boundary Area Biophysical and Agriculture Profile, and there was a Boundary Area Food Security Background. And so these two background documents and all the engagement, they informed the contents of the plan. So the plan's vision was developed through community input and built upon the vision statement that was created in the 2011 plan. I'm just gonna read it here. The vision is that sustainable agriculture and food systems in the Boundary help create thriving communities, prosperous livelihoods, and healthy environments. So eight goals emerged from the vision statement, and I'm not gonna read them all to you, because it takes a long time to get through them. But I would encourage you to go to the regional district website when you have time, look at the plan, read the goals. They range from goals that could change farmland protection, to write-down to building food skills in the general population, and strengthening access to food for people with income barriers. And each of the goals has actions attached to it. 107 actions came on the plan. Donna, let's speak a bit to this. So those actions, they're, they've been separated into who is responsible for the actions, and who takes the lead, and then who's secondary to each of those actions. So a lot of them are the regional district, I don't know the proportion off the top of my head, but we've got RDKV, that Food Council, that Tara described, the member municipalities, community partners and NGOs, and then the producers and ranchers. So in November 2018, the board made a resolution to endorse the plan. And what we're hoping is that each of the three member municipalities will also make a similar resolution and endorse this plan. It doesn't obligate you to do anything, but it's, you know, making a statement that you support those goals. So what can Grand Forks do specifically? So we just talked about endorsing the plan. Considering your food charter and decision-making, that's something that we learned through the process, and we came up with a food charter, but realized that City of Grand Forks already has one. Consider the plan and policy and bylaws that you have, such as your official community plan and your zoning bylaw. And I just did a search of your OCP and came up with, I searched, there were food, there were 21 hits in your OCP, and agriculture, there were four hits. So I think you're already considering food and agriculture in your policy documents. So permitting non-intensive farming in the non-agricultural areas, so you already have to do that when it's land is in the agricultural land reserve, and you have some ALR land, but just extending that into the non-ALR lands as well. Supporting food programs and publicly-owned facilities with as low-cost uses as possible, and supporting community gardens, which I know you already do at the City of Grand So what's happening next? So part of the funding that came from Interior Health was three years of funding, and we're in the third year. We had, the third year's pretty much over, but because of the flooding and everything else that was happening, we didn't really get to it, and that's why we're presenting this, so long after it was actually completed. But we do have some $15,000 from Interior Health that's matched with gas tax money from the electoral area directors. And that, we're just working on a process, there'll be an application process, and it'll go, be advertised, and then it's, the basic goal around that is to support local organizations that are working in the areas of food security, food access, and food self-sufficiency, and to support them somehow. So we're gonna have an application process coming soon. And then one of the examples that came up at our last Food Council meeting was to support farmers to navigate some of the barriers that they're facing, such as this new certification program, program called GAP, Canada GAP. And I threw in these slides just to emphasize that food security is not just for those people that maybe don't have enough money to purchase the food for their selves and their families, but we ran into, this was what the shelves looked like on May 11th last year at Extra Foods. So two of your grocery stores were in an evacuation order area, and that pretty much, fresh food was pretty much like that. It was interesting, because you could see what people didn't necessarily like to eat. The uncoordinatedness, because I can't quite tell what's at the forefront. And that's it for our presentation with Rowley.
Rowley, I know you played a major role in this, because you're constantly pushing it, and I saw you at the table doing it, so you definitely deserve a lot of congratulations here, too.
Thank you, and as does the team. Like, this has been a long project, and right around, I don't remember the exact date, but the kind of public unveiling of this project was right around the same time these pictures were taken, unfortunately, and so it was, it was either like two days, maybe post-flood or something. And so the timing was really awful in terms of when we unveiled it, and so that's why we're coming back now, a year later, to really work with the municipalities in the area to try to get it back onto the radar, because we haven't had time over the last year, obviously, to really attend to this. So I think that the one piece that you guys did speak to is, it's a pretty, I think, and maybe Tara, you have the numbers, but it was a pretty innovative kind of process to go down the path of building a food security plan, which I applaud Tara's help for coming to the table to help support across the province, building a food security plan at the same time as an agricultural plan, all in one project. And that's unusual. And so I think that the outcome that we have is a lot more potential to be actively referred to and guided document for us as local government.
Excellent. Further questions, comments? I see further on in our agenda, we are gonna deal with the situation where an R2 designation we're supporting in our, in the best way we can, and agricultural use on that land. Very apropos in terms of your presentation. So hearing no other, thank you very much, Donna and Tara.
Thank you.
Good work, Rowley.
And I guess, so the one piece to put on the radar of the City of Grand Forks is consideration of making a motion to endorse at some point, whatever, whoever that fits in your process.
Gotcha. I'm assuming that will come forward that way. And here to lighten us on forestry partnerships, Dan McMaster.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Thanks so much for having me here. My name's Dan McMaster, and this is a great opportunity to meet with what I think is the new counsel. Last year, I had an opportunity to come out here and kind of familiarize you with a little bit of what I'm involved in, in forestry, and some of the neat activities and events we have going on. But this is a great opportunity to kind of, I guess, for you to see what I'm in charge of or involved in, and through the constituents, and be able to direct, you know, questions and concerns to me. So a little bit of an overview of what we're doing here. I have VOGON Fiber, and I'll go through it. I know that you have a full schedule, and anybody who's heard me talk before, I tend to enjoy talking, so I go on. I will move my way through and look forward to any questions afterwards, or unless that comes up, then you go. So what I was asked to a little bit today, talk about is partnerships. This is important, partnerships, it's kind of, I guess, the crux and the foundation that I have to work from. Partnerships are very important, it takes up most of my day, and when you're really like VOGON Fiber, we don't have any tenure, so we're 100% having to get, not just along with everybody, but also to make relationships and partnerships work economically, environmentally, and socially and whatnot. So it is kind of, it's a struggle as the log buyer and the fiber manager there, but it's also a good thing, too, because it causes me to shake a lot of hands and kiss a lot of babies and make a lot of good opportunities with people. If you don't know VOGON Fiber, Canada, we're the mill that was the pulp and tablet mill in Midway. We're now owned by VOGON Brothers Lumber. It's a family-run business, and so we are the Canadian mill. Dwayne VOGON is our president, he's down in Colville there, and he's very supportive of this Canadian mill. And even through the tough times that we're all going through in the province right now, continually is coming up and showing his support to the workers and the contractors at our mill, too. I mentioned, we don't have a forest license or TFL, so we are 100% open-market source, but we do cut about 350,000 cubic meters up, is a number that is about 9,000 logging trucks. Compared to other mills, that's kind of small, but you can see it's still an important aspect there. And the type of wood we cut, we try to find that niche that doesn't have to be the perfect log, but the marginal log, the ones that have gone through perhaps blow-down and fire, beetle kill, we try to salvage as much as we can from everything from yellow pine that no other mill around here cuts, right through to the small logs that help with fuel mitigation as well, too. So we're very proud of utilizing the forest fiber, and I think we do a pretty good job with that, too. We have about 200 people that work for us, I think 200 families that work for us there, both at the mill and the contractors that I have as well, too. So we have a draw from Grand Forks, Greenwood, Midway, Rock Creek, and a number of different areas, too. I really have my partnerships from five distinct areas. The Soya's Indian Band, I'm their forest manager out of Oliver there, and I manage their forest licenses. I also have the privilege of being the forest manager of the West Boundary Community Forest as well, which I'll speak about next. I work very close with Woodlots and Private Lands to help them make decisions and help them do proper stewardship on their land and get them some value for their timber as well, too. I do a lot of trading and purchases with other mills, very good partnership, and of course, VCTS, who is part of the market pricing system, puts up their own permits, and we have a couple of partnerships on the side. There's just my procurement from the last 12 months. You can see, there's nothing in there that says TFL, there's nothing that says forest license, you kind of, you work with a lot of people, and as you can see, I'm proud of that, too. It keeps me homin, but we're surviving. So getting the light right log to the right mill, this is kind of the partnership with other mills. And so you can see up there from Interfor, that only a few hundred meters away, which is a very close partner, we have, a great partnership we have with them, to some of the smaller mills of Porcupine, Anacole, and North Endery, and Klesnikoff. And really, when we go out and we look at any kind of opportunity in the forest, it's making sure that proper logs are being picked, and that it's going to the right mill, and that we are still in close partnership, economically viable. I mean, you just have to look at the paper these days for tailments and milk closures. It's a bit of a scary time right now, but when you have strong partnerships, you keep each other up there, those companies especially, keep each other afloat and help each other out of problems. It's strong that way. I'll just briefly tell you a little bit about the West Boundary Community Forest, and this is a shareholder, shareholders combined with Midway and Greenwood. The West Boundary Community Forest has been around now since 2015, and it's a 23,000 cubic meter a year AEC, and a very good partnership on the west side, obviously. This is, I'm the forest manager simply because there's an agreement, a management agreement, VOGON Fiber and the West Boundary Community Forest. And so I have a couple of RPF foresters as well, too, and we work hard to meet every couple of weeks and put on an annual gathering for the public to come in. Engagement with the public is huge, listening to concerns, modifying plans, changing plans, and starting plans is really what Community Forest is all about, so people have an opportunity to give their input as to what they'd like to see happen, and it has gone, it has gone really well. And it's not a huge amount of volume, but it's very impactful, so we work hard for that one, and we involve First Nations quite closely in that one, too, and it's actually a really neat feather in our a really neat feather in our cap right now. So there's where we are, if you ever wonder where is this community forest, it's the pink area. There's Grand Forks and you can see Midway and Greenwood, I've laid out there. So there's a lot of pieces and parcels that perhaps we really wanted, but nonetheless we did get it and we're having some great opportunities within to tackle forest health and to tackle fire mitigation especially and a couple activities I was going to share with you now. So you can see it kind of closest to Grand Forks there is up in the Phoenix area there. I do have one project here that's happening up in Gibbs here, I'll show you. No, I just was going to mention her first before I do that, is that the revenue from the West Boundary Community Forest goes towards donations to local groups and the dividends is shared between those two shareholders. We have a summer forestry student program which we put on and as I say, the forest health is the crux of where we're trying to develop and provide local employment throughout and be revenue positive and so it's a lot of balls to juggle, but it all works and I'm very proud of the community forest concept and I think that is one that needs to see more opportunities in the provincial landscape as well too. This is the one that's just up from Grand Forks, up in May Creek, so that's the Gibbs Creek Road, which comes up from the old Lukabur homes on your way out of Grand Forks there. And this is a wildfire risk reduction project that we're almost completed now and you can see up in the top right, that was the area that looked like, there was a lot of down pine and there was a lot of dead pine, pine deal throughout that area too. So what we did is we've removed all that stuff and we've maintained, there's a winter picture of it of course, but if you ever wanted to head up that way, it's going to be a really neat showcase when we're all done. And it's quite a good retention in there and lots of positive species such as larch and fir and cedar and spruce are going back into the ground to kind of give that area more of a biodiverse look. And this is, this is something I think that's really important to Grand Forks because that area was a real tinderbox there and then one lightning strike on top of Phoenix away from causing a lot of trouble coming down. So not only were we able to salvage some sawlot and a lot of pulp out of there, we did a lot of pulp with, didn't just put it in the brush piles, they're quite small, we sent it all over to Selgar and so we were able to get that fiber out of there and we have a healthy forest coming up behind it too. So that's a, that's a really neat project. We had an opportunity to have an event on March 12th, we had the media out there and Southeast Fire Center and the ministry and people from the public came out there as well too. It was a neat event, it was very snowy, but it was a neat event and I look forward to having another one in the spring when it's less snowy, so. Just some pictures of it there, we had 30 people out and again, we look forward to doing more of these showcases. I really do enjoy talking with people and putting some of these showcases and getting the message across as well too. So and this is one we're doing up in the top of Midway Trail, so we're doing a, if you've been on the Midway Trails, you know the whole landscape, you can see right behind Midway there, it actually gets a little bit flatter up on top and they got hit hard by the June 20th windstorm from last year as well, they've had a real Douglas fir deal and that's a real problem, but you can hear that around here, it's becoming a real issue here in the south and you start to see those dead pot patches of Douglas fir around our landscape there and that area is affected by it too. So we have a fire risk reduction project in place and we're to take out all the blow down that's in there and anything that has died, we're looking at the insect diseased trees and the trail system itself has been very supportive and we've been able to fix that up as well too. And you can see on the right, that's an area we had done and we haven't done the Midway Trails, but that's our, that's what I'm going to have it look like afterwards to do some grinding of leftover chunks and put it out onto the landscape as well too. So thinning it a little bit and preventing anything coming from the, from the south there, it's so thick in the US that fire coming up, which we've had the last two years, little fires, that really, there's nothing to stop it for it rolls over the hill into Midway, so this is going to be a real good fire break, but still, hope for the next two, so we look forward to that one. And just in the, I'm working with the Jewell Lake people to try to get even a small area, it's obviously an area of very contentious and I have 100% collaboration with the people there. I've had a couple of meetings and have another one beginning of July, trying to help out with a little bit of removing of the pulp in that area too. I was able to get some funding from the Forest Enhancement Society and so we're able to tackle those challenges. And Jewell Lake, hopefully more to report on there. And the last thing I wanted to mention just in this little spot here is that the BC Community Forest Association where, is happening actually this week and I'll be going tomorrow morning down there. This is a partnership of all the different foresters and community foresters across BC and the ideas that flow and the things that work and the things that don't, it's a wonderful collection of simply landscape management. And I look forward to every year, those are my five years that I've done and look forward to again coming back there. I had spoke to the BC last week and had mentioned that I'd be bringing some information back as well too and perhaps an opportunity to move ahead with an expression of interest on a community forest for the Grand Forks and the RDKB. So I'll be bringing back some information about that too, of a newly established community forest, because I think it has wonderful attributes to it, it answers a lot of the concerns and problems that our community right now has and I think it gives a lot more input for the stewardship on the land base that the public and the professionals can work together on too. So much more to come on that, but I look forward to sharing that with you. And finally, I wanted to bring up the Soyes Indian Band. I have a very strong relationship with them, I work hard for a strong relationship with the Soyes Indian Band, wonderful individuals and we have a management agreement together. We've worked with them since 2014 and they have forest licenses and we try to make sure that our forest license we use for the OIB, we put out on the landscape and we tackle the key things, again, like forest health, but the First Nations component of the whole thing is that they're able to say areas that are very important to them to stay away from or to manage a little bit differently. And so the involvement I have with them is, has been very positive, I mean with any partnership, you always have your ups and your downs, but they've been very supportive. And my biggest things that provide them were jobs, very talented individuals at my mill. In forestry, we've trained and moved a few of them right through forestry, we've got some into logging as well too, and the band members themselves are really blossoming in given the opportunities. And sometimes, you know, you find somebody doesn't realize how good they are in one aspect of forestry and then they start to excel there. We're starting to see that too with the First Nations over there. So the Soyes Indian Band has been, has been a real strong component of it there, we work together on the landscape. On the left side, that's, we just finished that up on the OIB's reserve, reservation that they have just outside of Soyes and Oliver there and we did, as you can see, that's completed there. We took out all the smaller trees, the ladder fuels as well as the down debris and the elders from the OIB went up and were very, very happy with it. So that's just how you approach things and how you involve people, I think is kind of the key there. And then the last part is they do have a First Nation Woodland License that we've had an opportunity and you've probably heard about this and I always, I wanted to bring it up because some people don't understand what it is exactly. It's an area based tenure and it's a partnership between the OIB and BCTS and VOGAN's involved simply because I manage their licenses that I do. And so the area that it is, it's 50,000 cubic meters a year and it's essentially split 50/50. The area that it is here is, you can see from the maps from Rock Creek, you can see the 33 is there on the right map and that's an area based, that's kind of the cloudy green polygons out of there. And that area is now an area based that is very close to, well, is dead end to their traditional territories there, but is very close to Soyes, so it worked out well for them. And the partnership with BCTS is that all the work and the planning ahead of time goes through the band and the communities as well of the Soyes there, as well as the silviculture afterwards, but the BCTS still puts that up for auction in order to maintain the integrity of their NPS system as well too. So there's really good partnerships and BCTS locally here in Grand Forks has been, has been very supportive with information and planning ideas and such too. So if you wanted to find out more about the First Nation Woodland License, I can speak with you about that too. Our private lands and woodlots, we talked about, we help people lay out permitting and improving infrastructure, I help with seeding, I help with building trails. It's one, my staff absolutely loves the idea of getting out there and helping with people too and that's, we kind of, we kind of roll with that kind of mantra as well too. So in general, that's our, that's kind of some of the partnerships that I had there and I guess I wanted to fill you in on three or four of those and kind of recognize that I'm definitely a point man to hear that, to hear any of the concerns. I literally every day have a phone call or somebody stopping in who has a concern in Boundary as to what the management or the logging might happen there. Quite often it's not mine, but I do like to talk with people a lot of the, unfortunately I don't have the tenure, I love you, but I do enjoy that and I want to be a part of the solutions more than anything else.
Thank you. I think, I'd like to hear more about the partners and how much the two municipal partners may, are you free to talk about in general what their revenues were from the past year?
Yeah, absolutely. It's open documents there to the public, absolutely. I think, Mr. Mayor, probably the best way to think about it is, is the revenue as a per cubic meter. So in general, if you take away all your costs and all your logging and your development and holding back some silviculture and that, you've usually got about $20 to $25 per cubic meter, so you could, based on how the value might be. So if you think about the annual cut being, you know, 23,000 cubic meters, on average you can see that $20 cubic meter, that's a low ballast, so we have, would be significant, it'd be about half a million dollars in profits there.
To each partner?
In total, so that they would split it down.
They would split a half of it.
And last year of course, the lumber market was very strong, so there was higher prices right now, we're not as very strong right now, but last year was significant there. And what VOGAN's role in there is a lot of the wood goes to VOGAN, Interfor and I sell it to all the different mills here and we just buy it at the market at all conditions, so it's not a subsidized log for VOGAN, but it's an opportunity for VOGAN, so.
So our direction here has been to work at the regional level to move forward with our community being involved. You're our point man on this. I think you know that there's an interest in having an impact on our watershed, although, you know, we certainly would like to make some revenue that we could spend on essential issues, but in fact, I think the strategy of working regionally with Rowley, Area D and the rest of the group is far more beneficial for us in the next year or so, we have more capacity to build a system that works.
I agree.
Put the words right out of your mouth.
And I think too as well, when I was able to speak with yourself and the RDKB as well is, is I was wearing more of a resident of the Area D hat and an RPF hat versus a VOGAN hat there too. I want to make that clear, that it's an opportunity I think to just do better stewardship in my area and my district as well too. So however you see fit that I could be a part of putting that together, I'd be more than happy to, so.
And there certainly are some costs involved in getting into it, so it does make a lot of sense. Questions or comments, Council? Mr. Maslin and Counselor Zalinski?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation, Dan. I do have a bunch of questions and concerns. First off, in the Midway Mill, you know, we see these huge piles of chips. Where are those chips headed?
The chips are headed to Selgar.
Okay.
Yep, and so that would be the chips remaining after the log goes through and the chips that come from it, yeah.
And some lumber is pre-cut and shipped to Kettle Falls, is it, is that?
So our lumber itself, we don't have a planer, so we're able to get the lumber cut, we're able to dry it and kind of stack it. The final planing of it though has to be done in Colville, so we send it down to Colville. We just haven't, we haven't had the opportunity to afford a planer yet, so.
Okay, times have been good in the forest industry, but we are looking at a downturn in the American housing market, I understand, which is not a precursor for good times ahead. So I would caution the mayor that, you know, there has been revenue in the past few years for the West Boundary Community Forest, but that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be revenue in immediate years ahead.
I would say with the current structure that community forests are built on, the low stumpage compared to any other forest license or any other BCTS scale will always, I will say will always maintain a revenue positive if done properly. I'm very confident with that.
Okay. I do have another concern besides the economic one, and it has to do with some of the good work I've seen in your presentation about fire mitigation, reduction of fire risk. We have similar problems in our forests immediately north of the city, including in some of, in subdivisions. We have had the benefit of a fire reduction crew, I think the last couple of years, but they are now moving east, I understand, towards Christina Lake and that area. Is there any chance of getting more of that work? Like, I don't know how we reduce, there is so much debris on the forest floor, like those big windstorms, I mean they took out the Midway Trails, but they also did huge damage to our forests both east and north of this town. Is there any chance that there could be an increase of crew time towards that work?
It's an excellent point and I'll be right up front with you and tell you that it's all based on who's allowed to be in the area. So when I say, when I focus on the Midway Trails, it's because there's a forest license on the community forest, has the ability to get in there. North of here, the majority is BCTS, so that's all BCTS. The only opportunity that somebody energetic and innovative like myself would be able to get in there is a, is something called a small scale salvage permit. And a small scale salvage permit gives the ability of anybody in this room to go out there and pluck away some of those fuels as well. But you can't build any road and there's, you can't go over 2,000 meters and there's a lot of stipulations in there, so it's opportunities. But bottom line, unfortunately our province has tenures that are run by a selective duty. I mean, that's how I would answer that question.
Okay. What other concern the mayor did mention was flood risk. I mean, if, when you look at any Google map of the forests in this area, you can see the holes in the forest, in fact in your own photograph, you could see that. And the reduction of the old forest canopy and a connection to flood risk. I mean now, so a great deal of our community is now, you know, kind of very attuned to that. What do you see as a forestry solution in perhaps not in the short term, but in the long term, to the restoration of that canopy or what, or do we just live without it?
I think that the holes you've seen now, of course, are, I'd be speaking to the world of Pope and Talbot and BCTS, so I can't speak to what their forest management was or what it might be. I think moving forward, there definitely is a more, better recognition of how those areas have to be properly managed. But what you see in my presentation as well there, a lot of that removal, what you had seen there of course is the pine, it's the pine people, it was instinctively going operating, immediately planting a new prop, as well as seeding certain areas and proper water management is how we deal with it on the community forest. And no doubt, that's how it's done, I would assume in Interfor, I don't want to speak for that, but now Interfor and BCTS do it as well, so. I would say, I can hopefully speak for myself, Chris, and I think that is, I'm recognizing that with every little project we put together on how those implications might have as far as water flow, so.
Thank you. And Counselor Zalinski, and I think I saw Mr. Russell's name hand up there, so Counselor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to say, I'd like to learn more and community forest or how we can get to that point with the RDKB and that, so I'd like to have that discussion sooner than later.
Definitely complex.
Yeah, yeah, it hits.
Rowley?
I guess so just to speak to some of Counselor Maslin's points, I think that's part of the motivation for the regional district like that, and again, to be clear, Dan wears many hats in our community, but, so we're speaking about the potential for us to go forward and try to solicit an invitation to apply for a community forest for the Boundary Communities. I think that one of the pieces that is really critical around that is identifying what do we want that for? Revenue is one of those pieces, but another big component of it is being able to have some, you know, local involvement in things like whether it's hydrology, whether it's forest health, whether it's just managing- forest health, whether it's just management practices as well, right? So, that's the, let's be really clear that when we're, if we, as we carry on down that path, that the outcome that we're looking for is not just money, it's that we want to have more involvement in those decisions and to help navigate those things, which realistically, if we were successful, we'd probably end up with some of the most contentious areas in the management, frankly, which, yeah. And so, that wouldn't necessarily be simple solutions for anybody at the table there, but it means that we would have more input in a bunch of those other values that we would like to get out of that system. And so, you know, I think you captured a number of those things that, from my perspective, are part of the motivation for us to go down this path. We did, probably five years ago-ish, I think, maybe around 2015, we went down the, trying to, trying to again solicit that invitation to apply for community forests with the ministry. We were unsuccessful, and so we've now, you know, explicitly at the Boundary Community Development Committee made the motion to say, okay, we want to reopen that conversation now because times are different. It will be a different proposal than we had five years ago, but we see that there's value based on all of those, those values that we would like to have a say in, essentially. And Dan is one of those champions that hopefully will help us have a deep that path.
And, you know, to add to the financial picture, we basically reduced the allocation of money through the Boundary Economic Development Group, and so we will be looking for funds to proceed at a regional level down this path. Not initially a whole lot, but our commitment has to be there in terms of dollars as well to move this way. But I'm quite comfortable that, you know, what you're saying is that even in lean times, there is a profit there to be made by the municipalities on top of the issue of having better control of our watershed. Gallery, any comments? You're quiet today, saving it up for something. Counselor Mosland, again.
One more question, Dan, is there a possibility, like, quite understand that community forest annual allowable cut, did I hear, it said fifty thousand cubic meters, is that what I heard?
Twenty-three for the West Boundary. It does vary between ten thousand and seventy thousand across the province, but twenty-three is.
Yeah, I was on council when this whole thing came around the city before, back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, like, I'm a bit older, my memory's not so good, but we, we, one of the concerns was the smallest of the annual allowable cut, and as you receive in your map, spread all over the place. Question, Dan, to you and to make a direct to Russell, is there a possibility of, through future applications, of getting an increase in that annual allowable cut?
I think, let me think how I can answer that there. I think the, rather than looking at it as an increase there, it would be more of an establishment of a new community forest. And this community forest would establish its own AAC, and that would come, now, where it actually would come from, the land, that's some of the next steps, you know, there. But I don't think it's at all, it's not going to be, like, West Boundary is a community forest, but I think there has to be something on this side of people that establishes, that is established differently, yeah.
All right, and Dan, that's excellent, because I think council needs to stay on board with this, I'll make sure that we are kept informed that as we move down this path with the regional team. And Dan, you're a great resource, we appreciate you wearing any hats.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, the next item of business is a petition regarding the fifth street location of the Whispers of Hope Community Kitchen. Are there any speakers to this issue today? No? Okay, certainly council has had an opportunity to look at this in your agenda. Any comments from council, wait till Counselor Zelinski's back? Or not? It is a committee of the whole meeting, so we have a little loose or rules. Any comments on this? Council, this has been on the table, as you know, a number of times.
So, I guess my only question is, is the mayor's, what is the status of that community kitchen at the moment? I see the store is all there, the sign on it says, it's not open yet.
I can see a green building permit, so I think they've gone through a permitting.
Yeah, they got their.
Their permit straight. I understood they had some house permitting that they had to clarify. Can you update us on the status of the kitchen opening? No? Okay, my only understanding is that it's still on the table to open it, I haven't heard anything different than that, not from anyone from.
I'm pretty sure the trail has not been barricaded or anything, that is, the trail on the immediately north side of the building.
Right, that was an issue that we decided on, and I'm assuming that's on the worksheet for things to be done.
So, that's on the do list of the crew.
Here's the map.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we did do some preliminary layout of where the barricade or the fencing would be on top of the hill there. It did reduce the accessibility to one resident there, so we were looking at a kind of an alteration of that design, and the one business owner had some concerns with having the fence put there, so we're looking at a couple of different options right now.
Okay, thank you. So, it's in the works that council's working with that.
Okay, one of the other requests, counsel, was sidewalk safety, road safety, and preparation with road paving. I think it was a handicap parking spot was one issue, but also sidewalk crossings, that's a crazy intersection. And there's a new business now, a new wool business. Anyhow, is there any plans in that for work on the, on the road paving and sidewalk paving in that area?
I think that should be on the same work order that was discussed at the meeting in terms of what we do to prep for this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we did do the RFP for line and road painting, so sidewalks, crosswalks, or crossings for sidewalks and centerline markings and all of that, so they were delayed this year, but hopefully this, this next week, they're expected to be in, um, in their meeting, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, Mr. Jay.
Thank you, Your Worship, good morning, and council, good morning. Regarding the cut through behind Whispers of Hope, I understand that somebody suggested that it was improved to make it more, to make it safer, and in fact, to try and prevent daredevil youngsters going down on their sidewalks and trying to commit suicide, as other people who were due to walk could actually walk safely. I seem to remember seeing that somewhere.
Yeah. The other issue there was smoking, and clearly the city's moving forward with banning smoking in parks, other than in a designated area, and so it makes sense there, and I think it's been discussed, I don't know where we are with that, and I don't think it's as urgent, but to be able to have a designated smoking area at the west end of the park, somewhere convenient, so that people are not loitering around that area smoking when we could have a designated spot for them to go through. I know that, you know, smoking in general is controversial, but so is having people wandering around on the sidewalk smoking. Smokers, man, they're addicted. Any comments on that? I mean, again, we're in the process of putting the smoking issue out in front of the public and making some final decisions on it.
Mine isn't so much about the smoking, it was more about the safety issue in regards to the voting.
Right.
Is that there was also a letter, I think it was, Don Caskin had written in to the paper at one time, about the safety issue, having it blocked off.
Yes.
Because ambulance has needed to use that lane for, so I just thought I should mention that.
Okay, and I think, you know, we're aware of that complication there, so I'm certainly awaiting some kind of final decision on how best to do it by our staff. Nothing further on this matter?
I'm just curious on the smoking. You know, I've harped on this a bit. We were driving around yesterday doing a little bit of, you know, house shopping, and we drove up Riverside, and we're thinking, oh, it'd be nice to have that place, you could just go across the road, you'd be in the river, and look at that little island there, and that, so that little island, or virtual island, that's right in the river that people spend their days at all summer long, is that city property or is that provincial or federal property because it's in the stream? And I'm curious whether people can light up on that little island or not, according to your bible.
I would think it's provincial land, but we have jurisdiction. Come on.
I mean, it's surrounded by water, there's not really much of a danger of things.
You clarify responsibility for crown land?
It seems as though, yeah, they, they, it's provincially owned, but they kind of leave it up to us to police it, that kind of seems to be where it lands usually, yeah.
Yeah, it's been controversial again because jurisdictional issues along the river in terms of camping, so I think the bottom line for us is that, yeah, it's provincial land, but we do have a jurisdictional responsibility there. Nothing further on this matter, sir?
I believe on the agenda, it lists the petition as being by concerned citizens of Grand Forks. I was curious, in case anybody knows, like, they apparently don't have a spokesperson here today, but does anybody know if that's just citizens for a veteran of Grand Forks being misnamed, or is it a different group?
I thought it was a different group, someone can correct me, but I didn't see it as they call themselves C4. I didn't see it as coming from that group, and was a little confusing in terms of the name.
Sorry, you mentioned a group called C4? The Citizens for Better Grand Forks, their email address starts with C4, I believe. So, it is confusing, as is the term of just people using the word citizen in many of these discussions within the community, because a lot of times people will say something about citizens, and then for me, I'm left wondering, do they mean, are they speaking for, you know, the Citizens for Better Grand Forks? Because sometimes it is members of their group that are using the word, or term, and otherwise, people say decision makers or general collective as well. Wondering, are they speaking for the general population then? So, it is a confusing feel bit for me myself, and I would make my other.
I share your concern, but I'm not sure we're going to sort it out for this particular issue, so I would ask council, I'm assuming we should receive this decision with people. So, can we have a motion to receive the petition? Counselor Studley? And ready for a vote on it? Although in favor. Do you get to vote on it?
I don't think so.
You should give him a vote. I, no, she wasn't, we weren't. So, moving down, we get to the development variance permit for the non-medical cannabis retail store. Is that where we are? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, we missed that original topic for Area D. Okay. Rowley, you're on, I just thought Mr.
Thank you very much, and as always, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I think it really is a unique model for it to, if we have this collaborative kind of opportunity to have these conversations periodically. I'm going to ask Dan to come back up and help me for a part of this, I have one of his many hats, so I have. It's a different Dan now. So, I have, I guess, about six, six different items that I wanted to touch on, and the first and probably the key part of the conversation, I think, is, is economic development collaboration. And so, you know, that's something that has been evolving pretty rapidly over the last while, I'm really excited to see what that looks like going forward for the City of Grand Forks and Rogue and Forks and that collaboration. I'll add again, just to preface, that my role here is not as chair of the regional district, so I'm not here to give you updates on regional district kind of projects, as opposed to projects that are specifically, you know, peer-to-peer, the City of Grand Forks to Rogue and Forks, so that always gets a little bit cloudy, but that's, that's the kind of aspect here, as you have your own rep at the regional district table as I do as well. So, in that, under that economic development piece, one of the components that we realized probably would be good for an update for council is the Disc Golf project. It has been in the works, and I know the previous council had some updates on that, and again, the flood last year kind of put that on hold a little bit. Dan has been a huge help, not wearing any of his forestry hats in general on that one, and so I'm going to turn it over to him to give a little bit of an update. He's been developing with, also with staff participation from the City of Grand Forks and previous councils' participation, and the VCDC kind of support as well. And so, we thought it was timely to give you a bit of an update, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, again, thank you so much for allowing me to speak on this wonderful opportunity here. The Disc Golf, of course, is, I guess, well underway in its planning stages and securing opportunities to have it move ahead, and as Rowley said, that the flood definitely pushed it back a number of months, but I wanted to familiarize everybody with the direction that we're heading, and I'll go through a few of them quickly here so you can see, and Rowley helps me with the proper lingo, because when it comes to, you know, city and city lingo and that, please, Rowley, jump in anytime and you have that. So, the area that we've, we've got is, there's an overview there of, is the Angus McDonald Park is to the west, so as you know, the extra foods is just to the north there, and that polygon cut is the piece of ground that we are putting together the license of occupation, is that the proper term there? Yes, good, okay, excellent. But we had, I think it's been actually a year, almost a year and a half since we first got things going, so it's a little terms kind of. Our vision at the start and continues to be is a Disc Golf course for all ages and skill levels to enjoy, to convert an underutilized parcel of land into a safe and attractive recreational platform for Grand Forks residents and visitors to learn and play the game of Disc Golf. Disc Golf is a wonderful, a wonderful game that takes advantage of areas that maybe isn't a perfect parkland, but actually adds some obstacles and doesn't need a lot of modifications. There's fifty-nine hundred Disc Golf courses in Canada and U.S., so if you're thinking this is something unique, it's not, but to our area, definitely is unique, and it's a high benefit to cost ratio is Disc Golf. Once established, the maintenance is straightforward, and for Disc Golf junkies like myself who move all over the different state of Washington and all over the province, really enjoy finding the towns that have Disc Golf courses and meeting the people that are there, and it's really nice to see figures and people out, dog walkers and people enjoying it. I won't go through everything here, but I'll just tell you that Disc Golf is just like golf, so you have a tee pad and you throw a disc, and the discs themselves land like a ball on a coarse wood, and you keep throwing until you get it into a chain basket, and with that, they, you record your score, and the different, the different types of golf discs are drivers and mid-range and putters, although you could just bring out your Canadian Tire Special too and have a lot going with that, so you don't have to get that. There's a lot of tournaments out there, it brings in a lot of different individuals. I think of, not this year, but next year, the Canfest group, an opportunity to get right across the street for a tournament together for people like that, and other, other times that we have events here in Grand Forks, let alone the daily use that would happen there too. Everyone can play, it serves a broader portion of the community than maybe a specific, Disc Golf is easy, and it's fun, and old and young and families can take part in it, and you don't need a lot of experience, but as you know, the more you play, the more fun you'll have. If you're wondering where Disc Golf courses are around here, Roslin has one, and Fruitvale has one, Pantect in Kelowna, and Can Loops in Vernon. Uh, Penticton, Kelowna and Canloops and Vernon have, have a few each there too. So, they're in this area, but definitely a hole here. Grand Forks, uh, is already on the, the talk as far as what, what, uh, the Disc Golf and crowd would be able to come into town as well. You know, recreational wise, it's close to Pearlie and Hutton and GFSS. Opportunities for, uh, phys ed, uh, classes and groups to go there. It's a healthy alternative for, uh, our young people and our old people to be able to get out, walk around and enjoy Disc Golf as well too. I put myself in that old, old people thing, I'm, so, the young ones enjoy it, but so do we. The safety is wonderful as well too, because there's an increased amount of foot traffic in that area and that's definitely in the evenings and on the weekends where people like to play. That always brings, uh, a good opportunity, putting the right people in the right spots are, uh, helps with the safety. And, uh, the visitors, you know, in that area, open woodlands, you know, uh, it tends to be a little bit more of a busy, busy area in there. Conservation is a very environmentally friendly sport itself. Uh, there's no tree removals needed. We've already done, uh, a big cleaning up of, of downfields in there, but no tree removals are needed. Uh, having the obstacles in that natural setting is exactly what Disc Golf is all about. And our economics in there too, there, uh, the draw of people, you may roll your eyes when I say that, but I kid you not, you're gonna see all kinds of, uh, people stopping in on their way through and they see there's a Disc Golf course here. Opportunities for, uh, local establishment or establishments to sell, uh, golf discs. As well as, uh, the maintenance out is very minimal. And our society that is the Boundary Area Disc Athletic Sports Society, um, have a number of group of us who are not only energetic but enthusiastic to be able to, uh, to help maintain this, uh, on a contract basis as well. Where are we today? So, so the installation of a Disc Golf course, of course, there's tees and baskets and postings of signs. These areas here in, in, in there, well, we had a big course cleanup that went on and we started laying things out and DeeDee and I are gonna be working together very soon on, on, uh, putting the final touches on our layout that's out there, making sure it's safe and what everybody likes to see as far as the whole layouts are. So, we went out there just before your Halloween burn and it was great, because I think half of the stuff that was in that burn was all these downed limbs and everything. So, that worked out really well and, and as I say, finally, the, the course with, with DeeDee and others to make sure they feel equitable where we're going. Uh, we have done a big layout, I've had a number of professionals in as well as non-professionals to see how things would work in there as well. And so, we'll make some tweaks here and there, but it's, uh, it's gonna be, it's a wonderful piece of land for Disc Golf in itself. I'd like to move ahead with, uh, getting the basket installations, the baskets. I've got the order sitting there in limbo and actually after today, I was just speaking with Daniel. Recently, we've got our funding in place and so those baskets will be delivered and, uh, we'll be able to get them, uh, into the ground. They are, uh, they are movable as well, so they go into an anchor. Uh, if ever that, I should say, if ever the land, no matter what we do, if ever the land needed to be doing something else, we can literally uproot this and, and move it somewhere else. Anyway, we don't wanna get to that stage, but why, why, why wait until the land has another purpose? We wanna get something going in that land right now. Uh, each of those baskets can come right back out again and the, and the collar, the anchor that's in it is quite straightforward. We put in T-boxes out of there with help from some of the, uh, people in the city there. The in-kind work would be great, uh, straightforward. The lumber on the edges is kindly donated by, uh, the VOGA Fiber Canada, so that one... That guy was sitting here, he agreed to it. Uh, the T-signs, of course, are gonna be constructed for safety, watching out, but also for instruction and attractiveness as they go through. This kind of thing is, can be all, uh, done locally and make it really look sharp. So, it's, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a good-looking, uh, course for people to come into. And, and my hope is that on each of the signs is that I could, for a minimal sponsorship of our local, uh, stores and whatnot, we can, we'll put, uh, them advertised. So, where to get some food, where to get some drinks after they've, uh, after they've had a round there as well too. I think that'll look really nice and give it that local flair. So, so in general, I've gotta race through there, but that's, uh, that's, uh, what, what our vision is and we are moving, moving forward with it as well from the help of the city, the help of our DKB and, uh, the help of numerous members in the community that have come over too. So, uh, if there's any questions or additions, uh, Rowley, please feel free to...
Turn your mic off, Mr. Thanks very much, Dan. And so, the, the one piece in, in terms of budget and so on is a share, so, uh, BCDC. There's funding that was committed from BCDC a couple of years ago, actually, for this. There's in-kind support, the City Grand Forks has approved. And then, that will be complemented by, uh, ideally, Community Works Fund or other source of funding from, uh, Area D specifically. And so, it's a, it's genuinely a collaborative project.
Liberal dress code, it looks like. I'm like real golf. No, I'm like...
Build dress code. And, and, and if I might just, Dan, I think touched on all the points, but just to reiterate a couple, you know, one is that mobility piece of this infrastructure that is, is imminently movable. So, it, once you have it in place, it'll see an uptake of use almost immediately. Um, and then, if there is a change of plans for the City Grand Forks and you decide, you know, that site needs to be developed or something else, we can re-site that, the majority of the infrastructure. The other piece is, one of the constant challenges of, of economic development in, uh, in terms of our community is getting people to come off the highway and stop for, for whatever amount of time. And this is a perfect example of where, you know, as Dan says, you know, people will structure their vacations around where the Disc Golf courses are, where they're gonna stop for a few hours to, to play some Disc Golf with their family, with their dogs, to get out of the car. And, and, uh, you know, even the proximity to Silver Tattle here, you know, my mom plays this better than I do, so I go get her from Silver Tattle and, and, you know, she beats me then.
So, I see you're suggesting maybe we have our logo on there too and have some sponsorship from the city on... 'Cause they're gonna take those discs that they buy and tally your home. They don't leave them at the shop.
Absolutely.
Councilor Oddler?
Yes, uh, can I get you to go back to the map? I just wanted to, to check. First off, uh, I was wondering about the west side of it?
Yes.
Okay, so, so it doesn't quite go to the city's parking lot on Sprague?
Right.
Is there, will there be access from the city's parking lot on Sprague to the course?
I don't, I'm sorry. I don't see, so on west-hand side, I definitely came right up against the private property at that stage there. I didn't know in the southwest corner if there was a, I, I think I'm on private property the whole way through. I mean, we can find that out, but I'm pretty sure...
Perhaps to our staff to help there.
There, um, there actually, there is, I think, a 65th Avenue that goes straight through the Sprague parking lot, so perhaps to help with two areas. I think there's already a trail there.
Well, I, one of the issues was where parking, I wish you had Angus, uh, McDonald Park, as well as the parking lot on Sprague. So, just, that was one issue. The other thing I think, Oddler, this, this is a beautiful area. I know it's an empty lot. I'm looking forward to the development. Uh, I walk my animals there, a lot of people do. So, it is gonna be dog-friendly. Perhaps in the future, uh, uh, doggy waste bags could be put up as part of the, uh, project. So, there, and the other thing I wanna point out about this particular land is that it's historic. You can see the Y, in fact, 24th, I think 34th. Anyhow, that's part of the old Great Northern Railroad system, uh, that, that crossed the river there and is still city-owned, or that trail to the river, it's a city-owned parcel, uh, which is also, uh, a beautiful stretch of public lands right to the river. And that, in some sense, would be excessively throughout the Stephenville as well. Anyhow, so those are my two concerns, was parking as well as making sure it's, uh, dog-friendly. And if you ever get a chance to put up a historical sign, it would be great to point out that people are walking on abandoned railroads in there.
Do, do people pick names for these parks? Something you're gonna...
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, just, the Grand Forks Disc Golf Course, but what, yeah, Mr. Oz looking dead on there, is all of our holes there, I, when we do choose names, uh, is I wanted them to have the historical and the current day flavor of Grand Forks.
Right.
Uh, and so, that, that would be great. And, and, and having some interpretive signs as well in there too, right up our alley and, and a, a cost amount that's just very small too. To learn and interpretive walk almost 18 different points and 18 different holes, so that's good.
Uh, highway signage?
You know, from my understanding, that'd certainly be part of the longer-term strategy, but I don't know what the, you know, how to get that developed exactly, right? I mean, that's, you guys have more authority in the City Grand Forks for signage than we do certainly in the rural areas. And so, it, it's a necessity, I would say, long-term, to have some kind of signage to identify the directions, the, the way finding to, um, what that looks like. I, I don't know.
All right. Rowley, still yours.
Okay, thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
And so, a few other points and, and in interest of time, I'll, I'll move through them very quickly. Please interrupt if there's questions that you would like to, to add. So, um, first up, and, and again, just looking at what we share in terms of our, our kind of, uh, shared challenges or, or projects. Housing is one of them. I will reiterate, I think that you had a, a resolution regarding the housing needs assessment. It was a regional project, but certainly something that will be of value for both of us. Just as a reminder, so within that, um, I think what Donna was just telling me, for example, they've been very particular, that application has gone in, uh, to the problems for funding to deliver that housing needs assessment. But you're gonna see it come back to, to your table, because the wording on your support is very particular and so we've got to...
We have done a singular agenda for this evening.
Okay, perfect. So, so that's a, a, a project that, you know, I'm certainly excited about seeing what the outcome of that is. So, uh, forestry, the community forest piece was one of the things that I wanted to speak to, because that's something that I see that particularly City Grand Forks and Road Grand Forks, there's a lot of potential benefit there for us. And I think we've, we've spoken mostly to that, uh, successfully already. Um, to, to your pieces, Councilor Oz, and there, there is, um, also in terms of the, some of that larger-scale kind of watershed level, uh, impacts piece. We have been through, through the, the regional district kind of conversations, uh, asking the ministry to make sure that if they do go down the path of a cumulative effects framework, which they are doing for our watershed now, to assess the kind of, the, the relative impact, that they try to initiate some process in there for public input. And, and that's getting some traction, so hopefully, we do have some kind of public... The ministry seems quite interested in a public, uh, engagement process or public advisory kind of committee to oversee some of those, those types of forest issues. So, that would, that would help as a parallel, it's not aligned with the community forest conversation just in terms of our shared interest in, in forests. The Trails Master Plan, something, something that may be of interest to some of us. Certainly has also been, unfortunately, in a holding pattern for some time now. We got through the first stage, the four-stage program, process there. The first stage was basically collecting all the data of what's, what's going on in, in our trails. And it's not just the, the Trans-Canada Trail, the Great Trail, the Rail Trail. It's, it's, it's meant to oversee all of our trails and with the outcome, certainly for myself, that there's a potential here that we, you know, I think we are well-positioned to have a real world-class motorized trail network as well as a, a world-class non-motorized trail network in the Boundary. And for us, that's a key part again of our, of our economic development, our tourism draw as well as what we deliver for our, our residents, our residents. We, uh, the next stage of that project is the part that focuses on consultation. So, there's been frustration from people not being consulted, but we haven't really dug into that yet. And that's the part that's really been in that holding pattern. So, as that gears back up, we will see more in the way of open houses and, and different avenues through that consultant to, to actually engage with the community and find out what the, the longer-term vision is. And that it being that we, as local government, have something to back up our decisions around trails, uh, trails-related projects.
May I ask Director Russell a question on that?
I think you would agree to that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, uh, Rowley, and thanks for, for bringing it. I'm sure good to bring it up. Yes, the, the, so, has a, stage one was, was completed, a consultant was hired, the report was made. Has a consultant or somebody been hired to complete stage two? Has that been done? So, that's been done at the Regional District?
Yeah, so we, we hired, the, the RFP that went out initially was basically scripted in a way. The, the request for proposals initially was to say, um, this is what we want to, to deliver. And as we developed that contract, we segmented into, into kind of two decision points for, for us as local government, is after, after the first phase, we had a decision point to say, do we wanna continue on? After this, after the second and third phase, we had another decision point before, uh, the final product. And that gives us a, a clear position with the consultant to say, we're not happy, you know, we don't see that this is gonna be productive for us or, or there's other things that've come up that mean that we don't see the value in continuing, so we don't wanna close out the rest of the contract. So, the contract is with the same consultant for the whole project, um, Caspi Environmental. And the first phase is done and we made that decision to move ahead. We made that decision again probably about a year ago. And we have been, not taken action on that piece and, and now we're kind of getting ready to move ahead again. So, that would be in stages two and three. And again, you can see, um, you know, the, the details of that, I can, I can provide you elsewhere, but it'd be the same consultant.
Right, but it is, it is an important economic development.
It's an important economic, it's a, I think it's a hugely important economic development piece for us. It also, for those of us sitting at local government tables here, it is a really critical piece, I think, to have that, uh, support when we're getting into decisions around trails, right? And, and that's the challenge that certainly I've had, is we don't have any good plan behind us to, to make informed decisions about what we're doing on our, on our trail systems, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think the only other one that I need to touch on is probably the community-centered conversation. And, and that is something that is exciting, obviously, for us. As, as you know, we have some funding to go down the path of, of developing that, uh, vision much further and having some kind of concrete cost estimates and so on. Um, the City Grand Forks certainly has the skin in the game there in terms of, um, there were a number of counselors who were involved with the visioning, kind of, uh, exercise that took place with our, with our current consultants on that project, Urban Arts. And then, we have that building committee, which we have, um, both the mayor sits on as well as myself. And the, we've brought a couple of different staff at the city that also participate in that building committee. That's certainly just a, a really exciting, for me anyway, a really exciting partnership between the City Grand Forks and Road Grand Forks. And Community Futures really championing that project forward for us to navigate these first parts as well. And if, you know, I, I know from myself as well as, um, the input that I've had from the mayor and council currently and previously, certainly, you know, that we have a very firm eye on, uh, what the proposal would look like in the end of that in terms of not just the capital costs or development, but also the, the ongoing operational costs and the asset management kind of piece, as that's, you know, what, what I think is really critical for us in terms of making the decision, you know, when we do to move ahead. And so, the goal, hopefully, uh, like, from my perspective anyway, is that what we, one of the pieces, one of the products we'll get out of this is to have, uh, essentially a, a kind of base model that, that satisfies the real needs that we have in the community. And then, the, the architects will be developing a number of kind of add-on components that we can then bring to the, the, uh, the conversation, say, is it worth it for us to go down this, this path that to add this kind of component or that kind of component to this model? And the, the line of sight there is at once that is, is a little bit firm, uh, more firmly in place. Again, pending, I think, another conversation with the stateholder committee, which includes a, a broader brush of, of representation across the community. That, that would then come to an open house later this year at some point for, for everybody to have an opportunity to weigh in. That's, that's all I need to speak to today.
You know, I could solve another one of my issues here. I think that people need to understand the value we're getting from TODA. And so, the, the recent, uh, presentation that we had showed the activity levels and the kind of data that we're getting back, but the leverage of money was what was really interesting for the, the small amount we contribute through that. We get a massive amount of service from TODA. And I, I miss that sometimes, they get lost out there, um, unappreciated.
TODA is the Thompson Okanagan Tourism, uh, Association, Business Association. Uh, and so, through Boundary Economic Development Service, which is part of that BCDC table, uh, we get an update on, on what they are delivering for us. They, they, um, that is tied as well, so there's certain funding that they, uh, navigate directly... That is tied as well, so there's certain funding that they navigate directly, as well as funding tied to our municipal and regional district tax process. So if you go stay in a hotel in Grand Forest, you pay your, you know, just under, I think, 3% additional rate there, that goes into a pool that then the accommodators get to have some oversight in, but TOTA helps deliver the project around how do we strategically market basically the community? And so that's, it is a real high value, this is, we're just wrapping up, I think, the first year probably of that project, of having that municipal regional district tax. And so there's a lot of enthusiasm and some, we heard some really fascinating kind of targeted information around, you know, how do we have a much more focused marketing campaign to draw people into our area, and whether the breakdowns of people mainly based on cellphone data, where are people coming from? Are they coming from, you know, Nelson, for example, is one of our main...
Big Orwellian in terms of how much...
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much, Rowley.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, Council? I hate to persist, but I would like to go back to housing.
Yeah.
Director Russell, if you don't mind, I just have a couple of questions. First off, the regional housing plan involves putting forward a grant to UBCM, is that correct? A grant? Okay, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to establish a timeline, is what I'm thinking, Director Russell. You know that we are in housing, sort of caught between a rock and a hard place here. What would be, so say we got the grant, UBCM gave us a grant, so then we go out and hire someone to come in, talk to us about our housing, and then they would talk and consult, and then they would come back with a report. Is a year a reasonable timeline before the report hits us?
That sounds reasonable to me, but that would be a question that I would have to look to our staff, and Donna would have been able to answer that probably, but she's gone. So I would have to, I would have to follow up on that. And it's a, you know, it's one piece of the puzzle, it's a UBCM grant, but it's provincial, my understanding is provincial dollars that are being delivered through UBCM, because the province is mandating that we have, in local government, a housing needs assessment as part of that process.
We have three years, I think, to come up with that plan. Although I hope that we come up with a plan before three years. I guess my second question is, is what if we don't get the grant?
We'll get the grant. I don't know that, but at this point, I don't have the energy to figure out a plan B for that one. I think it is very likely, to be honest, that we will get the grants, because I think that we're early enough in that, we got the application ready and into this first intake, and given, you know, my sense is that given that the province is mandating that this is something that we deliver, they want to get the funding out to have communities be able to deliver it. And so, so my sense is that the odds are quite good that we will have that funding. We obviously don't know yet, but, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Director Russell.
Thank you.
I guess the quick answer too is if we didn't get it, we would apply again next time.
Well, I wish we had, I...
Find some other way of doing it.
Yeah.
Because I think it is essential, and that's your point.
That's it, Mayor, I'm getting tired of putting off discussions of our own.
Okay, well done. All right, all right, thank you, Rowley.
Thank you again for the time.
And you're on the development variance permit proposed non-medical cannabis store, 750 Donaldson Drive, this is the bus depot, we identified everything in the city for 50 to 60 years in terms of who had it before. Just to be clear. You read your material, well-presented in terms of disputing whether or not it really is a variance or not, in terms of how our reindeer is hearted. I think in this case, you know that we go to a public hearing on it, whether it was a variance request or not, and so that will be on the table this evening to approve it, to go forward to that zone surrounding, that we get comments from the public. Opening for comment, and the proponent is here, if there are questions, Jim is here from that company. Mr. Mazlin.
Mayor, the real issue with this building, in my mind, is its current use. That is, as a warming center. I guess my, I don't, this is...
Nidos and onions, or what? I'm not sure what word.
Well, I guess, the first question is, is is the warming center going to close if the proponent is successful with the reselling application?
I think that's a totally unanswerable question, nor is it in our jurisdiction to comment. This is a business venture, and, you know, our information in terms of what the warming center is doing should come from the whispers of Hope Management, not my speculation. So I think you're stretching it here, Councilor Mazlin, to go into that area of concern about the building. To me, it's a matter of a license request, as we've had in several other locations in town. The Winnipeg Hotel is one, where the way we dealt with it was to turn it down based on whatever personal criteria we used as a group. But in this case here, the only, you know, cannabis is allowed in the zone, which is the issue, but the variance is how close is it to the park, and is that park the kind of a park that we wanted to put into, or that we referred to in our bylaw? And second, is there any need for protection at all in situations like this? We left that particular bylaw in place in terms of proximity only to give council some comfort in terms of things coming forward, which at this point seems to be a bad decision that we made, or I was part of making in the past, but that's the issue I see in front of us here, so, you know, feel free to jump in, Councilor Zalinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think it's a valid question. Here we have a building that's being used for a service in the community, and some people say it's a needed service. So, and now we have a totally different service in that same building, and I think the question is valid, is what about the existing service?
So that would be the same as, what about the dollar store? If there was a sportsman's store wanted to come in, could we have some influence in terms of their continued use of a rental facility in another area of town? I can't see the logic.
Yeah, well, the question is, when is one business going to start, and when is the other one going to stop, and...
And what business is it of ours, is my question?
Well, we're asking for a variance, so we're being asked for our input on it.
But the variance isn't to do with who uses the building, it's the proximity to the baseball diamond.
True, but we, hopefully, we get at a big picture of what's happening in that facility, and what's not going to happen.
I think what he's trying to get at is, what is taking place? If we pass it right now, is he going to move in right now? Is he going to move in five years from now? Like, what's, that's, I think that's so...
Not our business, nobody brings, helped me out here, this is not our business. You know that the government, under the marijuana cannabis regulations, gives you a total second kick at the can, where you can exercise your choice here without having to resort to any other issue or variance. You can just say no. So narrowing that, the issue here is clear to me, it's not who uses the building for what, but how many meters away, and are we willing to exercise that when we say we're going to be a cannabis-friendly community? Please.
Council, yes, sorry, council's already made their decision about what uses can occur in that zone.
Yes.
And we did say that we would allow cannabis retail in that zone, which is an industrial zone. The issue at hand here is the proximity to the community use zone. We don't control, get involved in free markets and business and things like that, and currently control what types of businesses open at this time. Would recommend we go that way, but I mean, council could go that way. So this is just strictly to do with the proximity to the baseball diamond, which is in a community use zone. So it's a proximity to a community use zone. The reason that we allow this is for council to debate, take this to the public, to find out their views on whether or not they want this facility, or this business within that proximity to that facility. And because community use is such a broad zone, and has such a broad range of uses, it gives council and the public an opportunity to voice their opinion about this. But that is the issue at hand, is the distance to that particular community use facility.
Councilor Zalinski.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I sleep tonight, I didn't see the motion, put this on the table for discussion.
You know, we didn't do that, then. Are you desiring to do that?
No, no, sir.
So are we recommending this for tonight's meeting, that we're going to deal with this? Are you having some difficulty with moving it to tonight's meeting?
Just process, Your Honor, before we discuss something that does have to get on the table unless it's through a motion.
Okay, we got a request for a motion, would anyone like to make it? I'll make it. So the mayor makes the motion, doesn't need a second, or, and open for discussion under Okay.
Some clarity on the motion then, Mayor, please?
Uh, no, it's just to accept the recommendation that this be moved to the regular meeting
Okay, Mayor, I'm really, I'm struggling with this. I know that we are, we are supposed to ignore its current use and service. It is a community service, and it is in the light industrial zone, that the current use, I really, frankly, Mayor, I don't have a lot of argument with the proposed use as a cannabis store. But that's to be debated down the way, I guess. I'm just trying to grapple with the current use. What if the, to your knowledge, Mayor, is the warming center going to close at the end of June? I really, I think that's basically, if I'm incorrect, that is what the community would like to know. So to your knowledge, or to anybody's knowledge, can we get an answer on that?
Well, I struggle with the fact that you're bringing this in basically as a separate topic to the agenda item that we're looking at. However, this is a committee of the whole, and we're trying to be open. Could we address the issue of moving this forward to a public hearing, and then add that item for discussion, Councilor?
That sounds like a good direction, Mayor.
Would it work?
That would work for me, because the public was not consulted at all about the current use of the building.
Okay, we have some waving behind you there, if we could get a comment, Daniel?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the idea is to bring it to tonight's meeting, for council then to instruct staff to move ahead with the public engagement process. Now, in this particular instance, it's only a notification process, there wouldn't be essentially a public hearing attached to this.
Unless there's a variance.
In case of a variance, the legislative requirement is public notification. So we send out a written notification to within 30 meters of the property, and we advertise it for two weeks in the paper, and we receive written feedback on it. And that's the legislative process for a development variance permit. The council would like to take this to a public hearing, we could do a public hearing as well, that's your choice.
Okay, I'm sorry, I went one step too far with that, then. This would, this would bring it to notification and feedback from the community. So basically, that's the motion that I put on the table, and that's to deal with this, and then we'll decide where in the agenda we add this other issue unless you want to deal with it immediately now. Anyway, let's clear the deck on this. Do you have a difficulty with this going forward to a public notification process? All those in favor? Ouch. Oh, that's two. Three opposed. Okay, so we're not recommending...
Ask for who's opposed, please, as well.
Pardon?
We need to ask for who's opposed, because if somebody does not vote, it's a more in favor.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, was that confusing? I realize what you're turning down at this point is simply to move this to a public notification process?
Your worship, I think I'm in favor of a public hearing, but it's, I guess it's pretty tough for me, and I think for the public, to separate the two issues.
Well, we're going to do our best to do that today, right now, but without going further into this, I want to call another vote here. Are you turning this down in terms of tonight's meeting?
I think my concern, I'm with Councilor Mazlin here, I'd rather have a vote of the public, not just notifying them that this is going to happen.
You'd like a public hearing? Hold on a second, Daniel.
So, Mr. Mayor, this morning, it's just a committee of the whole meeting, the committee of the whole can't decide anything, really, in regards to this. Simply, the process would be to move it ahead to tonight's meeting, and if council tonight chooses to instruct staff to hold a public hearing on this, we will hold a public hearing on this.
And what if they turn it down? Is it still on tonight's agenda? In terms of recommending it?
It's currently on there already, as far as I know.
So they would have to accept the agenda if they turned this down at this point, recommending it?
This is just a committee meeting.
Okay. Councilor Zalinski.
Yeah, if that's the case, why do we have the stuff at committee of the whole? It's on the agenda.
The reason for committee of the whole meeting to discuss it here is it's a little more open forum, so the public can ask questions at the time in a more open way. In a regular meeting, the questions are at the end of the meeting, and the public doesn't have any chance.
Councilor Zalinski.
Okay, so my question is, when is the existing business in that building going to shut down?
Okay, and that will be on the agenda as soon as we decide on this issue, and put it into somewhere on the agenda.
But this is the open part of the meeting, so to me, it's still a valid question.
Yeah, it is a valid question, that's why I say we're going to deal with it in more detail as soon as we deal with the issue that's actually on the table with my motion that we voted on and got confused. So now I'm going to ask for this motion to basically deal with this tonight at the meeting with our recommendation, or you will deal with it in the accepting of the agenda when we sit tonight at the beginning of the meeting. All those in favor?
Okay.
All right, opposed. The motion passes, and so we will deal with it tonight at the meeting. So back to the use of the building. Do you feel that we can shoehorn this in, since this is simply just a committee of the whole meeting? We have a number of other items, but I think this is really bothering, I can see a visceral response, which is alarming, because we're a completely logical group. Mr. Nigel James.
If I may speak, Your Worship, Nigel James, I'm a resident of Grand Forest. The way I see it, I understand the building is donated, not donated, but loaned for the current use by the owner. But the funding of people working there, and the food that is served there, comes out of public funds, I believe. So therefore, you've got the problem, you've got in one building, public funds being used, and maybe, depends on the date, as Councilor Zalinski noted, that another shop will be open for selling cannabis, which, and the problems of trying to keep public funds separate from private funds, I know from my own experience, is a bit difficult.
All right, and I guess, Council, do you wish to just discuss this at this point? I'm not looking for motions, but would it be good to air what we can in terms of what's going on here with your concerns? I hear yes. Okay, let's talk about it then, and sorry for messing up the agenda. Les, and then Jim.
So I'll try and lay the stuff nice and simple, and let council out from their brutal bind. If I want to go and buy pot from this place when it opens up, I'm going to have to... If I want to go and buy pot from this place when it opens up, I'm going to have to wait till the people who are at the warming center or exactly be gone. There's a simple question.
I don't think the two things are going to fit together there.
Well, yeah, but I'm just curious about the timing.
Perhaps I could chit some letter in at your, Your worship? I'm Jim Kennedy, Needs Glass and Gifts representative. And, yeah, essentially, Don Briere, the proprietor of Needs Glass and Gifts, his son bought the building. And we knew it was going to be quite a long time before we would get through the process of getting the proper licensing for a retail cannabis store in that building. We were approached by, sorry, what was the name of the group that's in there now?
Uh, Whispers of Hope.
Whispers of Hope. And Don Briere, being someone who's always trying to help disenfranchised, basically agreed to allow those people to use the facilities until which time we obtain our licensing and can move in there as a cannabis store. So the intent was to help the community and help the disenfranchising of this community. It seems to be that there's another side of that that we weren't aware of. And, you know, obviously, it's going to be a temporary thing. Now, the process is taking quite a long time, as many of you who are familiar with the licensing process for a retail cannabis store. It's taking months and months and months and months and months. So we are at a stage now where this provincial license is complete and is now being analyzed. But the province still has to do their fit and proper test. The queue for that is about five to eight months long. And we went in there, I think, about two months ago, a month and a half ago. So, you know, it's quite long. We can't predict how long it's actually going to take. And we don't have any insight either. It's just, and there are people that have, are four or five months ahead of our application in various municipalities that still don't have their fit and proper done. So you can see it's taking a long time. And I'm really concerned about the community response to the, to the warming center being there. We certainly do not want to have a negative impact on our store in this community. Needs Glass and Gifts would love to be part of this community. The proprietors are great people. They're good community people. They're outstanding citizens. They pay their taxes and have since the inception of their medical cannabis dispensary business. And, you know, they survived GST audit in 2016. So there's, you know, very experienced business and one that is there really for the people of the community. And once you get to know Don, if you don't know him already, he's very much a community oriented individual. So I'm sure we could come up with a solution that would work for the, for the city. And we would love to engage in discussion about how that happens.
Great, thank you, Jim. Right, Counsel, further on this, do we have something? Anyone have something on their mind on this? I mean, I know that it's been controversial. It's funded by B C Housing. I can't tell you about the, I think we'd have to ask the new president. They had their AGM recently, elected a fairly strong board of directors who have decided to go ahead with this and to sponsor it directly. So there's no sub board. This is being run by the Whispers of Hope. We can get more information on it. Are you wanting to try and do anything there? I mean, the best thing that could happen is if we could find opportunities for the people who are there to move into other locations and reduce the numbers there. I mean, there are efforts at this point to plug in a whole bunch of services to that building. We know that it's being supported by mental health and addictions, by anchors. There's different programs that are being plugged in. Counselor Zielinski.
Just back to what you said, Mr. Mayor, different than the issue in front of us, which is just another business that we need to do. So unless we're talking about whispers in the warming center as a whole, I'm sure there's a lot of discussion that has happened around it. You started the conversation saying, no, this is just a new business that has to wait for a process. We're not talking about the warming center. So just let me know whether we're talking about the warming center.
Okay, we're talking about the warming center. We passed that motion that moved that issue of the new business up to the other level. And now we are introducing what Counselor Moslin has asked for, which is a discussion on the use of that building in our town?
Okay, so my question again is, when is the warming center closing down? If we're talking Whispers of Hope, the warming center, that's my question.
That's also a value statement to say, when is it closing down? I think we should ask for a report from B C Housing who funds it. That might be an appropriate question to them or to a combination of B C Housing and Whispers of Hope. I'm trying to bring some attention here to a process of dealing, which is, you know, with something that's obviously bothering me. Counselor, Counselor.
I think that the perception of having a cannabis outlet and Whispers of Hope warming shelter, whatever you want to call it, in the same building, we have pushback on our other issues. This one is going to be monumental.
I'm sorry, they're not going to coexist with that building?
We don't know that. Do we know that? And that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I just threw this one out.
Yes, I mean, the intent, the original intent was not to coexist. I did mention to a couple of people that are standing out front that if it was a good thing for the community, there may be some way to keep it there. But, you know, we're just being open to what is good for the community. So the plan at this stage of the game is to not have it to coexist. And they would not be able to coexist because I believe the provincial regulations would prevent that from happening. Because you can't have dual purpose, coexisting businesses in the same facility.
Right, I think that that door is not opened in terms of sharing.
I think it's the perception that will be running against and it's huge. It will be.
Let's clear that up, Dan, the perception.
But we haven't heard when the warming center is going to close and that will make it difficult.
Counselor Moslin.
I'm looking, would it be possible, Mayor, to move this request for consideration for a variance? Forward with the provisible, let the warming center be closed?
No.
Okay.
No, I think that's totally inappropriate. I think that, you know, you're bypassing the whole process of talking to the people who were running this thing, the funding and the nonprofit society. That, I can't see that being a role for this city council. That's a very dramatic move, Counselor Moslin.
Okay, maybe we should be asking Whispers of Hope and B C Housing to, rather than the proponent or the owner of the building, we should be asking B C Housing and Whispers of Hope to give us a report and tell us their plans.
Absolutely, and that, that should be the focus. Mr. Johnson.
So he's off, he has said they can't coexist, which means that when, when the cannabis store opens up, whispers will be there. So when you ask the question, when will the warming center close? Well, it has no actual bearing on what you're actually talking about, the development variance permit. Because obviously, the store's not going to be open while whispers is still there. So I thought, what's the problem? And, and I really feel bad for this business because basically, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Now they're on that road because they're trying to be good citizens in the community. And everybody here seems to want to hang whispers around their neck like they were trying to hang it around your neck back in September. It's ridiculous. They're a business. You're, you're here talking about development variance permits. Screw this rest of this stuff. There won't be running when they're there. So like, it does not obtain, really. And people on Facebook who think that the mayor is bullying counselors, he's just trying to do some order. It's his job. Come on!
Okay.
Thank you, Les, for saying what the rest of us were thinking quietly.
As far as if the owner of the building does not know when the tenants are coming or going, that's probably a problem.
Coming or going means when it's, when they're closing, when they're out?
Exactly.
No, I, I'm, but certainly.
It's the owner of the building. They don't know if the tenants are coming or going.
If I may, Your worship?
Yes.
And Counsel? Yes, well, I think the original agreement that was signed with Whispers of Hope was to be until the end of April. And because of the ongoing delays of policy and regulations, we'd allow them to continue in the building.
Okay. And Counselor Studley had a question.
We're focusing on closing. Let's just question around, when is the ETA for opening for the new proposed business?
Yes, unfortunately, we're not able to predict that. And that is because, as I said before, the process is so backed up and there's so many applications in the queue for the province. The R C M P are doing their fit and proper testing. They're eight months behind. So it's just, it's, you know, there's like six open stores in Vancouver. I think it gives you a sense of, you know, how long this process is taking. So we really don't have a specific date. If you want to get a fair idea of when it might happen, take a point eight months from now and more than likely, you'll have something pretty close.
Counselor Zielinski.
So what I just heard was that if there is not, the province does not give a retail pot license to this building, it will always be the warming center.
I mean, you, who's telling you that?
Well, the fellow just said that if they don't get a license for a pot shop, just like they did in April, that they would continue the existing use.
They?
That's not.
So it's not what he said?
If I said that, I didn't mean to imply that. We'll obviously have to come up with another plan. They're not paying, you know, there's basically, it was by donation that they're using that place. They are providing some funds, but it certainly isn't carrying any word to the building. And we would have to come up with, being a business, we have to be profitable to some degree. So we will have to come up with a plan in the future if that license is refused. Unfortunately, it would also be a bad thing for the city, I think, for that to happen. So, you know, we're going through the process. We can't predict what's going to come out the other end. In fact, not a single cannabis retail store can. And so we simply have to bide our time, cross the Ts, dot the Is, and now we're waiting for the response. Like I said, we're open to discussions with the community and the city. And we certainly don't want this to taint our presence in the city. Needs Glass and Gifts was the outstanding member of this community and to provide community use, that's really beneficial.
Good intentions. Can we possibly do a mind link between Counselor Zielinski and Counselor Moslin on focusing in on bringing these two people, these two groups to the table? Would you like to hear from Whispers and, and B C Housing what their long-term plan is for that particular location? I'm feeling.
Their long-term plan, period. I'm sorry.
I think that would be a great challenge for them. So I'm hoping that that, that will give you a better level of comfort that we're not ignoring this issue and your concerns. But let's focus even on the two people who can answer the questions you want answered. Okay. So if we could then direct staff to see if we can set that up in the future, Diane?
So Your worship, is that on the agenda tonight to introduce a direction on that? Because the council can basically ask us to do that through committee of the whole. So you have to just take this in addition to.
Sometimes we ask you that. Let's formalize it?
Yeah, let's formalize it on this.
All right, so I'll add that to tonight's agenda that we make that formal request to those organizations to get answers to those questions. Are we good?
You sure? The issue's not going away.
Don't raise your hand if you're good. All right. No, the issue has not gone away, but we need to address it in a directly. And I really, I do feel a bit badly for, for Jim today in terms of him being put in this position. But I think that our approach will resolve issues surrounding it and hopefully, you know, the goodwill of this company won't be compromised. Okay. And we're into the monthly reports from department managers. And I'll open that to comments and discussions from other of the councils. We will receive that. So a motion to receive. Counselor. Comments and. Counselor Studley.
I see business licenses are on there. Currently, business licenses are calendar years. It doesn't matter what part of the year you come in, it still ends at the calendar year. Has there been any thoughts of trying to address that? Is that part of the plan or break it down into three-month, six-month trunks that people could purchase?
How's your, Mr. Mayor? The fee that we charge is for the application processing. So we have, our building inspector has to go make inspections. Our fire department have to go do inspections. Sometimes phone works has to get involved. So it's actually an application fee. So it covers the cost of, you know, well, it doesn't actually cover the cost, so the cost for us to look into these and sign off on them. We are bringing a new business license by law forward. Maybe it's there. I believe next month. So we are looking at updating it. It is pretty old. So we will be bringing it forward and we will have public consultation, a definitely consultation with the business community before we bring anything forward, but we'll be bringing that around. And I think we're planning on having it quite as small, but lots of public consultations, consultation with the community and businesses.
Counselor, that's follow-up.
So just to clarify, if the fees for the application, then in theory, the license never expires. So can you just clear that up?
And that is one of the things we want to address is we want it to be an application. So we want it to reflect the actual costs or similar costs to what it costs for us to actually administer them. And so that is something that we want to address in terms of renewal fees. So a business that needs, say, yearly inspections or yearly fire inspections may cost a bit more and may have a yearly renewal. Where a business that doesn't require any inspections or any further follow-up, you know, we just sent out a letter. We just need like an administration fee. So, yeah, we definitely want to look and we want it to be fair and we want it to be reasonable.
And cost recovery. Counselor, you good? Anything further on the monthly reports? Counselor Moslin.
Okay, Your worship, so we're just dive in, is that right? We're not going to hear from one?
No, we have them written. If we've got questions, we have all the management staff here.
My first one is town side roads, roads and bar roads.
And David smiling because he's got.
I know he's got something planned.
He'll be in town soon. David.
Roads.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We did put out a RFP with the spring paving. So it's not overly substantial, but there will be patching done. So any of the utility cuts that the water is through have done. Donaldson Drive will be coming to council, I believe, this evening for a decision. So, yeah, there's, there's an annual operating maintenance kind of GL code that we put patching into. But none of the capital made it through this year, so.
Okay, so all right. I, I'll leave the roads, roads, roads discussion till tonight. My, I guess my major questions for this morning are towards B F R, the boundary flood recovery. Okay, we are, you know, just, thank you, Greg. We are just weeks away. We are just weeks away from some very critical decisions about housing in our town. Every, we're all going to talk about it a year from now, but, you know, I wish we had some time. I guess, so say, my question is towards, Mr. Watt. If we get what we want and senior government's flood of the DMA F, fund the DMA F grant, how many holes will need to be removed?
Through the mayor. It's a, it's a good question. There's about 78 properties with residences on them. The total number of homes that would need removal are somewhere in that order, but that was at the time of when the appraisals were done and there's been some demolitions since then. And there's also one manufactured home that was moved. But let's say upwards of 70 homes where people may still require that. Now, some of those homes were rentals and some of those rentals are the ones that have been abandoned subsequent to the flood. And some of those are ones where people are still either living in RVs or in other temporary, you know, intermediate accommodations. So, you know, we would expect that somewhere 40 to 50 of those households are probably looking at, depending on those homes, for sure.
The next question, your worship. So upwards of 70 homes are going to have to be removed. How many of those homes, and I notice, just a guess, are, would be capable of being moved?
It's a, it's a great question, through the mayor. So the boundary flood recovery actually had discussions with house moving companies in December to look at what potential feasibility, what the logistics would be involved in that. They took a look at a half dozen homes to see examples and were actually confident that a number of homes in North Ruckle, if they were vetted out properly after the flood, they're of the form that it would be fairly easy to move. Now, that's in the $40,000 or $50,000 price range if they're one-offs. Now, in terms of advanced planning for how many of these could be moved, the BFR is requesting some Red Cross funds to support the evaluation of homes, to see if they're in a condition that can be moved and to support the decisions of homeowners, whether or not they're in a buyout area, if they're looking to elevate those homes to be able to, to look at that going forward. So there's a few different moving parts to this. We don't have all the answers, or how many are actually in a condition that can be moved.
Your worship, Mr. Watt. A C to Mr. Jones's question.
Just on that topic of moving homes, I know that after Hurricane Sandy, they went through this whole process of trying to elevate some homes and some of those homes were not elevatable, but they tried anyways and they ended up rebuilding them. So you have a $60,000 house, they spent over 600 grand on, and their experts are telling them, oh yeah, we can do this. So I understand if we're not, their experts aren't our experts, but if they say a given home is movable and it's going to cost 40 grand and in the process of moving it, it falls apart, who pays for that? I'm curious.
Through the mayor, there's a lot of logistical issues that one of the, this is on our radar, the whole question of house removal, demolition itself is also an issue. I think the BFR and critical infrastructure team is, you know, would like to see the, you know, minimal number of houses going straight to a landfill, but the proper management of house removal and house moving is a big topic that, that we're going to be tackling, I think, with funding, for sure.
Thank you.
One, one more question, your worship. Okay. I guess, knowing the end result yet to our grant applications, the big question for me and I think for some of council, is there going to be any flexibility in our plans once the grants are, if the grants come forward? Do we have to stick to the, the grant plan exactly? Can we adopt it in any way, considering some of the difficulties, proceed with removing homes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So when you put in for the grant application, it was, you had to put an expression of interest to get further on to the actual grant application. Then we spent about six months putting together the grant application. In that time, we had numerous conversations with the federal authority on, on the grants and the rules within the grants. There will be some flexibility within the grant, but if, if you have something laid out in the application and you do not do that project, you just do not get the funding for that portion of the application. So you may have some flexibility, but, but we can't guarantee that we have a lot to work with, because they're very strict. It was a merit-based application, so when you put it in, you had different justifications of why you were doing what you were doing. And they're going to want to see you follow through with that because that's what it was either denied or approved, or I guess in this case, we would assume it was approved if we were trying to work within the budget, so. Yeah, it's, it's going to be limited.
Okay, councillor Maslin?
Just one more regard here. I, I hope the, the community can see that, that what we're up against, that if we are successful in our grant applications, we're going to have to remove upwards of 70 homes. The logistics of that are mind-boggling, not to mention the expense. And are we going to lose the people that live in those homes as well as the homes? That, that is the sadness and the motivation for this, a lot of this councillors' concerns and thinking. I want to make sure that the community understands, sees that, that that is the cloud over her horizon. Thanks, Mayor.
Councillor Zelensky, or I'm sorry, would you like to respond to that first? Yes.
Please, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a note on that is that the BFR team and city staff will be bringing forward discussion for council to look at that supportive, the, the transition planning for what that would look like. You know, it's, it's not just about buyout areas and DMAF, there's a lot of outstanding housing needs that are there from before the flood to post flood, and so council, understanding the options on the table is, is something that's better, but of course, everything depends on that, on that DMAF funding decision, so.
Thank you, councillor Zelensky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to be clear about what I thought I heard, because that word pending funding kind of scares me. So what I'm hearing is the $50 million grant that we've applied for did not have any dollars in it to actually take the houses themselves out of North Ruckle, is that what I'm hearing? No, actually, the, the application included the costs for home removal and restoration of the land.
Further councillor, councillor.
Oh, gee. There, all you have to do is raise your voice and they think you're a council. So last year, I threw out a crazy idea that we could possibly sell this opportunity to Hollywood or Hollywood North and they might help us offset the cost of destroying these buildings by filming it and doing it. Like, people may have thought I was joking, but no, I mean, I actually put work into this and I put videos out there and I've reached out. And what I hear is that the Okanagan Film Commission will be coming here with a few people from the industry to take a look at this. Now, there is no hard and fast anything, but I just suggest that if the flood recovery people are working on ways to fund this and grants and stuff like that, that, you know, don't X this out and if possible, leave some leeway in here that you can actually get some support in this mechanism. Like, I don't, no, there's no guarantees it'll happen, but hey, if they helped pay for the cost of the removal of some of these buildings, the destruction of them, that's a boon to us. And they would come here and if they did that, there would be jobs while they're doing it. So, you know, just keep that in mind, that, that that's a possibility on these, it may sound, that's all.
Unless planted that seed and it was picked up and there is interest, so we'll see if anything develops, we'll have to work. Further, on the manager's report, councillor Zelensky.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. To the manager, words update on her electoral policy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this was brought up at the last meeting in the moment, and it was stated that it was going to be after the electoral master plan was ready.
Thank you. No, I'm going off the minutes that we're going to prove tonight that says that there will be an update on the EV policy on today's meeting, so that's what I'm going on, is whoever wrote up the minutes said that, thank you.
All right. Through you again, Mr. Mayor. So the EV charging policy, I did reach out because we are one of five municipalities that are, have our own distribution system and how that other larger municipalities are dealing with such policies. So in conversation, there's only one that has that in place right now, and that's New Westminster. And they have a lot of horsepower to go through the, I guess, council and the audits and the different background information to make good policy. So some of the things that they're looking at was, you know, council-endorsed renewable energy development, energy efficient and resilient buildings, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, low carbon mobility for all. Now, in, in this, they, they looked at putting it in their official community plan as setting the guidelines for some of these initiatives. So they're looking at producing transportation energy, using greenhouse gas, supportive use of efficient low-carbon mobility. And they, they created a master transportation plan that supports transition to zero emissions mobility. So there's a lot of different things. You have to look at the residential or at home charging, the commercial or at work charging, and then just the tourism or on-the-go charging. And all of these have different levels and different times that associate with the charging and how far you can go. So we need to think about the load management within our electrical distribution system and how this is going to affect that long-term and with the scale that they look at as a municipal. So they looked at, you know, adding into their zoning bylaws, their development permits, there's, there's a whole bunch of things that come into play, not, not just one charging policy. So I was going to suggest maybe we have either a council workshop at some point, or we look at discussing it during the strategic planning session, because it, it is quite involved. So just the direction the council wants to, to look at with the policy or the bylaws that are going to be affected and kind of the business behind it.
Yes, councillor Zelensky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, manager. I guess the, the point that, or one of the discussions that we're going to get to hopefully is whether it's a useful service or whether it's actually hopefully going to be a private business that we're setting on people's toes. And that's generally, all the good points you made are agreed on how we deal with it. Hopefully, when we talk about our OCP rewrite and the change there, that's where we start talking about it again, industry to do command also. So, but, but yeah, it's that question, whether it's a service or whether it's a business is, is the one that I'm.
And you would see it as strategic planning as a possible topic?
Well, especially as the manager had mentioned, that seeing as we own our own electrical distribution, we better know what this load is going to do to our system and, and where we're going to tie onto that within our system. So yeah, a lot of big questions, as long as we're working towards it, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, it sounds like a degree of education required, so it may be vested in that forum that we have time for you to really explain it in detail.
Yeah, there's, there's different load sharing stations and they look at your load profile and stuff like that. So I was thinking I would leave that with our CAO to kind of navigate which process or how it gets the conversation started, but we would, I would definitely like the, the conversation and the guidelines for councils.
I'm already confused, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our next theme that we were looking at in the OCP was transportation. So let me just get some perfectly with our transportation, our transportation review of the OCP.
Okay, good. Thank you. Progress. All right, anything further? Then we are accepting the monthly reports, motions to accept the monthly reports, councillor. Bylaws in discussion. We have some bylaws to discuss. The first one is the park access review. And I think Daniel wanted to speak to this.
Kevin Scotty.
Or Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Welcome, Kevin. Lead us through.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just council had asked at the last meeting, based on some feedback from residents that live near George Massey Park, that there was some concern that in, in the parks access bylaw, we listed all of the parks that absolutely prohibit overnight camping, and that park was left off the list. So this is more for discussion, I don't have a suggested resolution at this point, but more, more just to collect a bit of feedback. This could be as simple as council says, yes, we'd like you to add George Massey Park to appendix A of the bylaw and it then becomes a part of the list. But just because it gives us another opportunity to discuss the parks access bylaw, in the briefing notes, I, I mentioned that Abbotsford has recently dealt with their parks access bylaw in 2015, it went to the B.C. Supreme Court, and in that, there were some references back to Victoria, which kind of got some of this all started back in 2008. And just a couple of things to note, in 2008, Victoria was told that when the number of homeless people exceeds the number of available shelter beds, in other words, there is nowhere else for someone homeless to go at night. The question was, does a bylaw that says you can't sleep in any public places violate their constitutional rights under section seven of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms? What they found in the appeal was that space must be made available, but if there are other options, saying that space must be available, if there are other options, you're not required to, to allow camping in public spaces because there are other options. So it says that as long as there are options, it's not a blanket, you can camp in public spaces anytime you want. And so, you know, that's, the reason I bring that up for your consideration is adding George Massey Park means that all of the parks that are not otherwise prohibited from camping, which includes the sports fields, are all off the list. Doesn't mean that there aren't other city properties or, or other public areas that would be available, but it just wants you to be aware that, that adding George Massey Park then completes the six public parks on that list.
Councillor Zelensky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that's one thing I didn't know about this, is the way we wrote this bylaw, it was you can do it anyplace except these places, as opposed to saying, yeah, you can camp at this one place and not these others. So I don't know if we have 25, 30 different parks on our list. So what you're saying is the existing list we have, if we put Massey Park, that includes all the green space, all the parks within the city, is that correct? So if you go through the bylaw and cross off all of the other green space, and that includes things like the cemetery, which is, which is prohibited, the ball fields, for example, those are already eliminated through other parts of the bylaw and really, yes, then you, you come back to the designated park space in the community and it is just the six, those six parks, Lewis Hayden, Gyro, Sumoto, Barbara Ann, Massey and Sea Park.
Councillor?
So in some of the past discussions, the term moto in the parking up at the, or the place has been mentioned. Someone told me that there was an agreement with the ATV club, I guess. Fill me in on that, please. Yeah, so the ATV.
Yeah, so the ATV club has a license of occupation for a portion of the moto property, not all of it, and it's the lower section there where they built their staging area and parking. But the city owns a significant larger portion of land up there, and the license of occupation is for a portion of that. And that is not a designated park space. It is municipal land, however.
Your point being there are already people up there?
No, no, my point being is it may not be a quote-unquote park, but if in this bylaw it's designated as the place to go camp, that can happen too.
Yeah, it's my opinion that we don't specifically have to have park space. There has to be public space.
I'm losing this, but are we saying then that that's the optional option? Lower moto, Counselor Moslin?
Your worship, there's all sorts of city land, not just up at Bodo, the disco, of course, for example, you know, where it might be available for camping. I guess, I don't know, your worship, I really, I would like to add George Massey to the schedule. I would like to do that.
Okay, get that out of the way.
As quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Then it might be just to wait and see. Where do the tent city, where does it happen? I know what's happening already.
Right.
You just have to be a bit of a walker, a hiker, to find them now. They're smaller, they're well hidden, but they're close. There hasn't been a nuisance yet because the ones I've found have been well hidden and fairly discreet.
There have been a number of nuisance complaints that I've dealt with.
Okay, I have identified.
So Counselor, you're driving at the fact that we should identify an appropriate place to be an alternate.
Well, there's all sorts of city land. I guess my major point is, is I would like to add as quickly as possible, George Massey to schedule A.
So you make that motion?
Certainly. So move, your worship.
So we're moving it to tonight's meeting. All those in favor? Okay.
Yeah, so do you want that a bylaw amendment for tonight, or we could bring it to the 24th to basically bring first three readings of that bylaw, and then we would have a fourth reading in a month?
Do we?
Because we could possibly wing it for tonight.
We could bring the first three readings for tonight.
Do we need to do it that fast? I mean, I'm not sure there's an urgency. We put it in there, it's going to happen. I mean, nobody's camping here, you're not going to allow it.
Okay, your worship, just a question then through you and your staff. We have to go through all those readings again just to amend the schedule?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, let's do it as quickly as possible.
And tonight's meeting is going to be pretty crowded, folks, but...
That's why they pay us the big bucks.
Okay, we're going to try and get it on tonight's meeting as an intervention. All right, this does not solve the issue, though, of us taking some responsibility for an alternate location. Are we going to take that responsibility? Is it our responsibility? What are our options? I mean, if right now there are a number of camps ringing up, and I know it's going to get worse as time goes by, whether now or next year, it's happening, we're talking...
Well, okay.
George, Counselor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If what you're saying is we have to designate one of these parks on the list for a place for people to go?
That looks like our legal obligation.
Okay, then I'm going to suggest...
Not necessarily a park, not at all.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest, yeah, I'm going to suggest Lois Hayden. Then we will know the effects of our policymaking daily as we do work. Thank you.
Okay, interesting two chapters. Are you serious on that, Counselor? Or are you just making a point?
No, if there is an issue and we have to designate some place, how best to know whether we have an issue or not?
So just to reiterate, when the bylaw was called forward originally, there was groups that really did not want any camping happening in this park and in Gyro and in City Park. So that's where the three first parks that we put on the list of the parks that shouldn't have any camping due to the public impact and potential situation with the community kitchen being right over here.
Right. So I think we're chasing their tail here at this point. This doesn't seem like a reasonable option, but a good point made. I think the real question in front of council is, do you want to move this direction in terms of having an alternate location? If so, we should be leaving it to our staff to look at that, not speculating ourselves on where this might occur best, but if we want that option on in front of us, I think we need to ask their professional opinions on where it would work best. You know, we've got a number of levels of responsibility. Some communities are totally at its length, others are quite involved, and know that our staff are already aware of those situations. So we're going to get good counsel if we ask them to prevent it with some options. Mr. Johnson.
Just an anecdote. In the early 90s, when I moved to Vancouver, I was surprised at all the scatty clad girls hitchhiking everywhere. Then I found out that in the year before, city council had decided that they'd respond to all these people who said, all those street prostitutes in that area there behind Hastings shouldn't be there, do something about it. So they did. Guess what? It went everywhere. If you don't give them or let them have a given area, whatever it might be, they'll just go everywhere. So, you know, maybe Lois Hayden is better.
That's what I was, do you want?
You can talk together.
I was just going to say that if we're done with two, it's one of the parts to be the designated area, I would like to recommend City Park, honestly, because it's quite large, it's near the heart of town. I find it to be the most pleasant part. I think it would be, I know if I had to tap somewhere, that's the part I would want.
You can, hey.
It has that nice look, too.
Yeah. So since that's my choice, I think that would be pretty good.
Will certainly have staff to put that on the list for the park? I mean, there may be barriers or things that we can do to protect whoever lives there that are off any requirements, not eliminate an idea.
Go ahead, quick, take your calving there.
Mr. James.
Just a remark, your worship, and that is that at City Park, there are children's playgrounds all around.
Thank you. Further on this matter?
Well, the flip side, your worship, is something we dealt with already, and that's the worming shelter, or whatever you want to call it. And the long-range plans, whispers of hope at B.C. Housing, is your long-range plan to build a permanent year-round shelter? In which case, if there is, our concern about the Supreme Court kind of evaporates, and there won't be any camping in public spots because there will be a public facility to go to.
To go to, yeah.
So we do need to have that conversation with B.C. Housing and Mr. Zepol.
Yes, again, another important agenda item to discuss would be the, exactly that, the fatality of homeless issues.
See, it's been hard to talk for a while.
Well, that's okay. It's just with the unknown questions in regards to how long B.C. Housing, the low barrier support housing, when it would be built, and as to the question asked, it refers to the warming center, how long it will be open, is that I'm wondering if we don't have a place picked out for people to be able to camp overnight without being, you know, charged with some bylaw infraction, how long would it be before you guys would have a place designated if the warming center is closed on the 30th? Then those people there will need a place. Aside from that, with the time span between the low barrier housing development, is that the existing homeless community, the numbers could very well grow due to, you know, seeing firsthand how easily it is for people to lose their homes these days. So I'm just kind of wondering, if you don't pick a place, what other kind of provisions are there, and especially again with the timelines involved?
Great. So we do need to address this as quickly as possible. There are things happening down the road further. Okay, I guess we have addressed then the issue of the access and we'll deal with it again this evening. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, and the next one is the most exciting, financial plan amendment, the Financial Services, and the establishment of the simplified fund reserve, reserve fund. All right, great themes up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so the financial plan amendment is actually to amend the 2018 numbers in the 2018 to 2022 financial plan. So we completed our audit process and financial statements in May, and we, I mean, we recognized that there would need to be a financial plan amendment, that we needed those numbers to be final in order to go ahead with it. So in total, our expenditures were well under budget, but and under the financial plan amendment that we did last fall, but there are some line items that need to be adjusted, and there were a couple of capital items that needed to be amended as well. So just to ensure that we're compliant, we're proposing this amendment.
Mr. Sted, question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at the original bylaw, 2045, looking at A1 and looking at A2. Why the big swings? And I guess what I'm asking is that the original budget, the original budget, we were at like 34 million for revenue and 15 million for expenses. So we ran 21 million for cash from operations and we're down to 3 million, so on, and the other ones are happening.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the primary difference between like lower actual revenues is due to the capital grants, and so because we didn't go ahead with the projects or we don't recognize the grant revenue for that, so that's probably the major difference there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the one that really kind of baffled me from the original bylaw to the current one we have is that our amortization had dropped, and that kind of, with the age of our infrastructure, that kind of confused me.
Mr. Mayor, amortization is quite a high-level estimate in the financial plan. In fact, actually, some communities don't even put depreciation in their financial plan, and it's dependent on the timing of projects and how... So let's say, for instance, you had projects anticipated for, say, $20 million, you're going to be seeing some amortization in the current year that would be reflected in the budget, but if you don't go ahead with those projects and they get, which we didn't do, we have quite a significant budget for capital expenditures, but we, and our actuals were quite a lot lower, so you wouldn't see the depreciation to reflect that.
Yeah, just corrected, the original amortization on the original bylaw was based on capital projects. It was supposed to be completed that year in previous.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think my estimate uses kind of a half-year, half-year's worth of amortization.
All right. The other matter that we're dealing with here is the next item on the agenda, which is the establishment of a reserve fund.
Simplification, do we have a motion on that?
I was going to do them both together, but we'll do a separate one. So on this bylaw, 2045, we're moving it to tonight's meeting. A motion, Counselor Zelinski, all of us are okay. And the second is the...
The 24th, Mr. Mayor, according to 24th.
24th, okay.
Yep.
Close enough. Bylaw number 2060.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So sometime in the fairly recent past, we recognized that our land sales reserve fund did not allow for just the acquisition of land that wasn't associated with the capital project. So rather than just amending that bylaw, in the interests of efficiency and reducing the number of bylaws we actually have on our books, we decided that it might be a good idea to just go ahead with a consolidated reserve fund bylaw and just roll all our separate reserve fund bylaws into one. This doesn't include development cost charge reserve funds because those bylaws are actually currently under review, and they could be done as a separate combined or still kept separate in the different bylaw. So I have basically incorporated all the requirements of the individual bylaws into this consolidated one. There's a little bit of wording changes that I've proposed, and I listed those here. But there was one thing that I would like some direction from council on, and that's with respect to our parking, lieu of parking, because currently, right now, we just have it, I'll actually backtrack a little bit, because the community charter actually allows us to use that in lieu of parking money that we collect for either off-street parking spaces or for transportation infrastructure. You have to have two, but it's a requirement that you'd have to have two separate reserve funds for it. So there's potential there to either to add another reserve fund for that, and the wording on the actual, in the community charter, says transportation infrastructure that supports walking, bicycling, public transit, or other alternative forms of transportation.
That seems like the direction that I would guess council would wish. Counselor Moslin, this is to dedicate funds from...
Yeah, your worship, the motion ahead of us is to basically amalgamate these reserve funds, and I, I would, I speak against that. I'm having trouble with the need. I would rather, if we need to update these bylaws for each fund, that we continue to do so on a separate, one by one, and serenely, do them one at a time. The one of the reasons I say that, your worship, is that council has no access to the bylaw library. In fact, I was really kind of tickled to see in the presentation, here, there was a bylaw back here from 1990 somewhere. My goodness, what a, what a, how in the world did you get that? You know, I have no access to that. What was it? Yeah, oh, bylaw 1303. Wow, where did that come from? We, we're having a hard time, I, you know, having a hard time accessing bylaws. They're not, they're not, they're not displaying on the web in any coherent way. I'm having a hard time trying to keep track of them myself.
Which is exactly why I don't think you need to add more work to council's workload. When we have an offer here to amalgamate them and do the corrections all at once, we'll be reviewing each one in the list, but you're, you know, I think this is work for the management team, for our CFO to do, and if we get involved directly in that, I think it's an issue of time management here. I'm sure you'd be very useful doing it, but...
Each of these, reserve funds had its own original purpose, and say, for example, the community works block, you know, that's, how that money is spent is, you know, basically described in federal legislation. is, you know, basically described in federal legislation. And I hate to see it pooled away from that kind of oversight.
We're not talking about pooling the funds, right? You're clear on that? Okay.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. We're not talking about pooling the funds. We're just talking about consolidating all the separate bylaws with the same conditions into one bylaw. And so the conditions for each separate bylaw are included in the various segments of the new bylaw. And the table defines the purpose, which is the same as the original purpose. And then the other separate sections still have the same conditions for each of the, we're all pulled in from the separate bylaws.
But it opens the door to strategic purchases where that door was closed before in terms of the wording. So I just don't see us wading into the detail that we're being offered here in terms of review.
Yeah, I guess, I'll see to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council Moslin. Just a Council Moslin's question about the list of bylaws. I'd just like to point out the minutes from the March 11th, where SAP was requested to give us a list of all those current bylaws back in March. You're right, we haven't seen it yet. So, but I do have a question on this bylaw in front of us, Mr. Mayor. It appears that we got an extra Capital Reserve Fund popped up from someplace. So we've got Capital Reserve Fund and General Capital Reserve Fund. Yet when I look at the Reserve Income and Transfers for the City of Grants, Parks for December 31st of 2018, I don't have two Capital Reserve Funds. So I'm just questioning where that one came from. Thank you.
Did you make that up?
Well, we've always had, oh, since the, since the separate General Electrical, Waste Water, and Water Capital Reserve Funds were created in, I think it was 2016, early 2016. We've always, we've always had, so we've always had all those funds. There's a capital, and then there's the separate ones that pertain to the separate funds themselves. And the reason we still have that, we still have that capital fund, and because there was, there's an amount of money remaining and that, so...
So the county titles that are grouping those particular reserves together.
Okay, maybe I should tackle it a different way. So all these funds, Reserve Funds, you have listed here in the consolidated bylaw, you have the existing bylaws created. Can you show me which are the two bylaws that designate the Capital Reserve Fund as opposed to the General Capital Reserve Fund? Because I can only find one. And on that, while we're looking, I did have one other question and just a confirmation, because I think when we were going through the budget explanation this year, we were following the process of if there was surplus funds generated in a, in a certain department, that those excess operating funds would go into that department's Capital Reserve Fund. And, but that's not what the documents in front of us say. So I was just, I have clarification on that part, too. Thank you.
So you're assuming that this gives us more freedom to move money from one Capital Surplus Account to another?
This does, but the process we followed this spring is, it's, I can remember specifically, I think there was a million-dollar surplus, and that went into the Capital Fund. And a surplus in the water, in the sewer, went into their Capital Fund. But this says that we can give you up any surpluses.
Don't read it that way. And getting to the bottom of it, and you see room for abuse in terms of...
No, no, no.
Control of the surplus, because it can be moved from one surplus to another?
No, I'm not saying that. It's just that we follow the certain process with the surpluses this year. And then when I look at this one, 3.6 and 5.123, says that we can move those monies around. And I was just under the impression that when there was an operating surplus in a certain department, that rolled into their Capital Fund right on that.
Yeah.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, in reference to those two, the Capital Funds, those are the Capital Fund Reserve Fund bylaw 1854, which establishes the Capital Reserve Fund. And then bylaw 2028, which establishes the General, the Water, the Electrical, and the Waste Water Funds. Okay, and with respect to the second part, that's where it's actually stated in the purpose of the funds in the table, that the money will be put into those funds according to the Asset Management Investment Plan and the Annual Budget. And that's why I've included the annual budget piece in there.
So there are controls there that's not loosening up the financial controls on it?
Yeah, without considering surplus operating funds, I'd argue that is for budget and funds.
I heard both.
Yeah, the Annual Financial Plan would cover, cover the annual, the annual budget would cover the surplus.
Right.
One more, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a little clarification. So 3.6, Funds allocated from the annual operating budget or surplus or from general revenues may be placed to the credit of any Reserve Fund established in Section 2. So that tells me if the electrical had a million-dollar surplus, it doesn't go into the Capital Fund, that we can split it up between any of the funds listed.
We decided that, if that was a decision. We're just stating that we have that authority if we wanted to use it.
I understand that. It's just that we did a different process with the surpluses this year. And just clarification, that we can move any operating surplus from fund to fund. Just a clarification of that, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, we can.
Sorry, yeah, that's actually not a transfer. I think you might be, I don't know, alluding to transfer funds from one to the other. But Section 3.6 actually allows us, in the Annual Financial Plan, to determine which reserves we want to put the funds into.
But we're in total control of that. I understand that. Okay, are we ready to move on?
I just wanted to address, just for a second, Council Zelinski, who's talking about our March piece of the bylaw library. So just so council's aware that they did approve some monies in the budget to have a, not a part-time person, but a person come in that would be taking care of some of those pieces with record management and bylaw library. It's something that we just don't do overnight. It's something that has to be looked at extensively. Because we've got well over 2,000 bylaws, and a lot of them are likely not alive anymore. And so it's, we don't want to put anything that's sunsetted down or anything in a piece. So it's going to take a lot of putting together to get this correct.
So it is underway. It's going to cost money.
Yeah, so I'm assuming October, November, is this a, like, you're hiring someone to do it. Obviously, there's a... So when would that end?
Well, we just have to get some other little pieces in place. It's not something like we're still looking to see exactly what the best fit is, because it was a person that was going to work partly through the planning department as well as corporate. So there's a few parts that we still have to put together.
So you're in?
Possibly. I don't, I don't want to put our toes to the fire, but yeah, we're in our best.
Okay.
Mr. James. Thank you very much, Your Worship. Actually, on that subject, it was about eight years ago when I spoke with one of the staff here and said that the bylaws, I took an interest in the bylaws, and I found that they were all out of date. But they said that, no, we're getting on with them and updating them. So it's, we've made progress in eight years, which is good to see. The, sorry, Your Worship, the most important thing is, I believe, regarding these Reserve Funds. And from the Church Community Charter, Section 188, Paragraph 2, that the council must establish a Reserve Fund for the applicable purpose, which indicates to me you can't combine them. However, you could combine, I can sort the bylaw and say, subject to the following things. Another thing regarding this time when monies were changed between, or potentially not switched between various sub-accounts, was about six years ago during your previous term, Your Worship, when the electrical account was in considerable surplus, was not considerable, in some surplus. And it was decided to split it up and to refund the people who lived in Ruckell, not the people who paid all the bills in the first place.
Yeah, I think that was Moslin's motion.
It may have been, but however, some of the, some of the residents of the city were not best used.
No, I understand that was controversial, I shouldn't joke about it. And we had...
I'm wondering why councilors are not allowed or having access to the bylaws.
Well, they do have access to a lot of bylaws, but some of them are grossly out of date. We have 2,000 of them on the book. So I understand we're going to be cleaning up. But I would guess that all of the relevant new bylaws, I mean, within the last several years here, would be available to council. And we've got a lot of hands, but I think we should go back and comment.
Oh.
I was just going to comment to Mr. James's comment about that council must reserve, establish a Reserve Fund. It just applies to those specific type of revenues in that section of the Community Charter.
Yeah, same here. Okay, are we, are we through this one? We have a motion on the table, and last comment is Council Zelinski.
So, Miss Mayor, you mentioned we have access to these bylaws. Where do we have access to them?
That's what's being worked on. We have a report that you're about to hire someone part-time to start putting some of that to...
True, but there was a comment from the audience saying that we have access to these already. Just where are our accesses?
We only have access to our more recent bylaws, from what I understand. We still have a lot of archived material we haven't cleaned up.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Everybody has access to the bylaws. It matters in what format they're in and how easily accessible they are. A lot of them are in file folders that are stored in the basement in a vault, and because they're from the 70s or 60s. And we have index cards right now where we have to go through to figure out which bylaw is which. So the process of updating them, having them scanned improperly, sorting through which ones are actually repealed and which ones aren't, which ones can be repealed. Hopefully, we'll bring a list of hundreds of bylaws back to council that have basically been repealed, right, to get them out of the system. But the cleanup process isn't as simple. I doubt we're going to have this done by your end, to be honest. I was more thinking this is a two-year process.
Well, I understand that this is not a simple job. It calls for a certain level of expertise is why you're interviewing and trying to find the right person for the job. Okay, Councilor, does that satisfy your concerns?
I'm okay today.
Mr. Johnson.
So the process that Daniel just described, does that mean that we're going to see you guys sitting here deliberating every old bylaw, so whether it should be discarded or not?
No, they're going to package them up in groups of 100.
See, the amount of time that you spend on individual bylaws to begin with, you won't have to film it.
Well, it could be interesting, considering how Ms. Rhodes was trying to bring 10 at a time. By bringing 100, the discussion could be rather lengthy.
That's why we're here.
I'll come with, I want them to see you during your, during your keep.
Special meeting.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We'll now vote on that. We haven't lost track of the fact we have a motion on the table. This is just to move it to tonight's meeting, 24th meeting, sorry, you can, I'm putting more stuff on for tonight. All those in favor? Why?
I read them. It's too late to say, Mayor, but I really think that the future maintenance of bylaws, it would be easier to look after each separate bylaw than it will to look after a shopping cart with the bylaws.
Okay, and I'm just going by the face I saw coming from our CFO in terms of that particular idea that we are making a lot of work for ourselves. So I don't want to bury that thought and concern you have. So you will be able to express that in vacation.
That's why you're on, too.
And the next one is the interesting situation we're dealing with in the 7600 block of 8th Street. So it looks like we're certainly putting effort into attempting to act in accordance with our beliefs around the importance of food and agriculture here. And plus, what I see in the second portion of the motion that we're looking at here to send to tonight's, or the 24th, I should look in more detail. Anyway, is basically trying to protect the community, the interface with the fact that this is in a residential area. So the covenants on it protecting environment and also intrusion onto the neighbors. So open for discussion on this. When's it being, this is coming to the June 10th? For first and second reading. Comments on this? Interesting, never really had spoken to this today, that, you know, this is one thing where, that I think we've got a good balance here, that we're supporting agriculture, but the protections in terms of the citizens' rights surrounding and the impact on the environment are being considered.
Just a question, Your Worship. I know some city lands are within the ALR. Are these particular lots within the ALR?
No, they are not. And we did research that thoroughly, because if a land is in the ALR, we lose thermal control. And so we are in close proximity to the high school, to residential, and it is currently Zone R1. So we got a legal opinion as well on whether or not if it's being used as agricultural land or as a farm, if the farm protection practice is active by, but it does not. So we do have a lot of leverage with managing the type of activities that could occur on that parcel to ensure that it doesn't have any negative impact on our groundwater as well as on the neighbors.
Environment, justice, that kind of thing.
On this page, if you could scroll up a little bit to where it says, no, sorry, down, sorry. Adjacent land use is north of Trailhead. Well, it's way more than that. Okay, it's a future transportation corridor, an active transportation corridor. It's a well-used corridor as is. So I just wanted to make sure that it's not, that that is not deboted to something, an artifact, when it actually is an active transportation.
Yeah, at the moment, I mean, it is a real bet that we are going to be developing and really looking to an active transportation fund, so that section is definitely part of that. And yes, it will definitely be...
But the agricultural activity is not going to risk anything in terms of the trail bed? Okay. So basically, to recommend to tonight's meeting for first and second reading, can I have that motion?
If you have any questions, the proponents are here in the room. If you have any questions for them, are you okay with speaking and answering your questions?
Sure, yeah, speak up.
Yeah, basically, we just bought that land last fall, and we want to continue using it for, you know, for farm, it's been farmed for pretty much, probably 100 years or more. And we want to just be able to continue doing that and be able to put up suitable buildings and things that aren't permitted under the R1. We see it as being both beneficial to the community to keep it, you know, as a large tract of green space, because it does act in part for, you know, it allows that water to go through into the aquifer and maintain our aquifer here. But also, you know, because as you build, as you build housing and pave over areas, then the water tends to flow off and be gone quickly. then the water tends to flow off and be gone quickly. It doesn't soak into the ground or anything. So leaving it as fields and much as it is, it will, you know, it preserves that aspect of it. And, you know, we think it's important too to be able to maintain some areas to, you know, for the food sustainability for the area as well. And I mean, even long after we're done with it, we want, you know, we think it's important to preserve that land for future generations as well, to have places where you can still, you know, grow crops, grow food, grow, grow stuff in town.
Excellent.
Question? Yes, sir. Any thoughts of a nice big old traditional barn, side barn, to support your agricultural operations?
Well, we want to be able to, because the size building that's allowed under the R1 zoning is basically 50%, you know, your aggregate outbuildings is 50% of your residence area. And 16-foot-high maximum height building, that's pretty limited. You want to have a barn to put your hay in and put your tractors and whatever into as well. So right there, you know, it's, the bylaws, or I mean, the existing zoning as it is really doesn't permit one to operate it as a farm just by the fact you can't even store the crop.
So that is your plan, is that a big building to support your operation?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, at some point, I mean, you know, all this takes money and buying the property used up a lot of it. You know, we do want to move on to the property at some point and we do want to have outbuildings, a barn, yeah, we will be building a barn. We'd like to build a barn, you know, some kind of storage sooner or later, we haven't started that because obviously at the moment, you know, it's pretty hard to define the size of a building when the permitted, you know, what we're permitted to at the moment is not adequate for what we need for a barn, so.
I was just looking for a nice big old barn dance.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, that, you can do that too.
All right, council, can we have a motion then to move this forward to tonight? So move your worship. And all those in favor? And the second motion is the same, but to put these governments basically on the property as part of what we move forward for the second reading. So a motion for that. Councilor Corle, all those in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for covering. I'm waiting.
So the next item is bylaw 1919. And again, just my understanding of this, and I confirm this, is that we actually have done the zoning and now we're trying to catch up on the wording of our OCP on this matter. Is, am I correct in that my understanding? And I think there have been some concerns, there was some expression that we should maybe wait for Mr. Brooks's presentation. But in fact, you know, we have done the first step on it to zone it for I against E, but we haven't changed the OCP.
Do I get to ask the nasty question again? Yours, your worship.
You guys, Cheerios today?
Okay, I'll ask it. So I guess the request for this density zoning, how does this impact the PC housing structure on second?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, it meets, it would meet the requirements for the density that we're proposing, which is a median density requirement at the downtown core. This is supported in the official community plan that has been since diversioned in 2011 and prior. And when we brought in the changes to the zoning bylaw last March 26th, we allowed for 50% residential on the main floor of the commercial buildings and 100% above. The current density doesn't allow that. And it would actually, pretty much every building in the downtown core that has 100% residential above currently does not meet the density requirement. So it actually is bringing it in line with pretty much everything downtown.
It's already there.
Yeah, we already have a lot of illegal, non-conforming residential. And for anybody in the downtown core who wants to rebuild the building or is getting insurance to rebuild a building, they can now have 50% residential on the main floor and subsequent floors 100% residential, which definitely is an opportunity to spot some costs and get some revenue generation. And also is infill and densification in the downtown core, bringing people to the downtown core, which is also in the official community plan. And so we're implementing the policies in the official community plan and we need some bylaws as well.
Great, thank you. Councilor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from what I just heard, that there's really no urgency, it's just getting things in line. So what I'm going to put on the floor right now is a tabling motion, that we table this until the discussion with our different definitions that are going to come before September. So it'll be just a little bit later. Yeah, so we can have the big discussion all at once. So my motion is to table this until the session.
Okay, not a debatable issue, tabling?
Is it a postponed motion or?
Yeah, table it until we discuss those definitions that are coming forward before September.
Timeframe on it would be, generally, core commercial definition.
Yeah.
I'm asking management, is there a problem that we've created with that delay?
My understanding of the letter in hand for PC housing is to remove all encumbrances to the Second Street development if the Seventieth Street does not, Seventh Avenue development does not go forward. So this would be a part and parcel of that as well. But this is something that we had implemented last year and I've got Graham Watt, who was the senior planner last year when we did these updates. And unfortunately, because of the flooding, we didn't get around to implementing these pieces last year, which the intention was there, but it just didn't happen.
Okay, and we're not debating tabling?
That's right. Well, yeah, table the motion is just a request for a full discussion.
All right. So the motion is to table it?
Yep.
May I second that?
Don't need a second or, those in favor? Opposed? And down to the transition memo, and this is basically for information, so I will open that up to comments or discussion. Graham is here and ready for action if you have questions. Councilor Moslin?
Yeah, I guess I'd love to get the floodplain model going. I'd love to plug it in and give it two or three different scenarios and see what happens. Okay? I think Mr. Watt knows what my motivation is, is the retention and pretension, retention and preservation of city lots at the forks of the river. And what would be the possibility of running that floodplain model to see what would happen with various what ifs?
So I'm a little confused here of what we're deciding on or what we're accepting here. This is a transition plan and you seem to be wading into the issue of would we have some impact on a specific project within the DMAP grant? Can you clarify what we're being asked here? I see this as our plan to withdraw and reorganize from the crisis.
Firstly, to your question, Councilor Moslin, in talking to the engineers, they're still working through the final kind of configurations of the model. It takes about an hour to an hour and a half to run each scenario. So scenario selection in advance of a meeting where they could be demonstrated the ideal, otherwise it might end up being less made. And, you know, take quite a bit of time while waiting for the model to run in essence. The challenge, you know, that you outlined is that where you place a particular site can have an impact on how much attenuation of flood that that location can have. So you want to know what is the difference of putting it closer to the river versus further away and what are the impacts on planning and community development downtown? So I think these are good discussions for July when we're expecting the final report and model from urban systems to come in. And I think, you know, discussion with planning and development to have kind of what's the impact on downtown would be part of it. Mr. Ray, to your question about the memo, this is a summary of where we are one year in. A lot of our team leads when we had funding for one year, and so we're in transition now to a smaller team. And we're also reorganizing around support for the city and regional district in the implementation of the major mitigation projects. So instead of the ones leading those, the city is basically leading the mitigation projects as proposed, and boundary flood recovery steps back and is still supporting on what recovery needs and has a supporting role in the mitigation work. So this is simply just a line up where each of our projects is ending up and the kind of recommendations that will be coming forward this summer.
Councilor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess three different questions. The first one, back to Councilor Moslin's question, is so if we want to run these different models, you would like us to list them, list them to you and give them the different scenarios to you by when so that you can be prepared?
Thank you, to the mayor. I'll discuss the question with the engineer and see when they would like them and how much time they need before the meeting that we would have in July. We'll work out a timeline and propose that to the council.
Second question, sort of a follow-up from this morning so far. I said I heard the waiting for funding when it came to demolition. The team leader, the manager told me that no funding was within the application. And then I'm down to, I think it's 3EI, and it says status of demolition is pending. So I'm still confused.
Thank you, to your mayor. This is a, this is a separate project, so the evacuation order, property case management. There's a couple of properties in the rural area that are hanging on the high bank and, you know, essentially falling in the river. Some of them are falling apart right now. The RDKB is requesting funding from the province under an emergency order from PC Environment to basically prevent them from falling in the river. And so the RDKB is going through the process right now to get the quotations and be able to proceed with the funding for those, that's, those properties that aren't within the DMAP application. This is all about preventing them from falling in the river.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm down to 4C. Big question for me is when?
So when, for when the final report for recovery management is? There's certainly a lot on our table right now. And also I'm going to be away for a bit of vacation and then the counterpart Chris will be as well in July. So I think by August, we'll be able to both be working on it at the same time. So our final recommendations for long-term recovery are to be expected by the end of summer. That's subject to our leadership to discussion of.
So again, November is a good guess.
Okay, further to this report. And a motion to receive. Councilor Moslin, all those in favor? Thanks, Graham. So this brings us to the bottom of the agenda. I would like to say that it looks like the issue of rezoning on 70th tonight will be moved to the front of the agenda rather than the end of the agenda at tonight's meeting. There will be a vote of council on that change to the agenda, but I'm getting a feeling from the council that I've spoken to that they would like to bring this to the front of the meeting and to avoid the kind of congestion or problems that might exist if we keep everybody there for the full extent of the meeting. We have a lot of business to do and the meeting will not go quickly. So I think this is a courtesy to a large group of people and I'll put that on the table tonight on the agenda except. And further from the gallery, anything from anybody about anything?
May I go to lunch, please, your worship?
I did just want to point out that with food and housing being such primary needs, and I think that it's kind of been a priority for many people. And I've been watching different groups and organizations and I think people have really been trying to be quite open and understanding and hearing people's concerns and opinions. And I just, I think, I wanted to thank you guys for your patience and your, your trying to work through and approach some of this in a very difficult circumstance. And I just wanted to say I appreciate it and I've seen it through other organizations.
Thank you. And you are a hardworking group. Motion to adjourn?